Order. Clerk, would you please read the compliance?
In compliance with the South Carolina Code laws, 1076 section 30-4-80, as amended, notification of meeting and meeting agenda were posted at least 24 hours prior to meeting on the county council building in a publicly accessible place, on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting notification.
Thank you. Divocation will be done by Mr. Powell. You would please.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our time to come together. Father, help us make great decisions and understanding for the citizens in benefit of Jasper County. Grant each of us wisdom and surety today as we carry out the mission of the county. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings. We're here today to become acquainted with the various organizations, staff, and vendors. When I initially joined this council, the previous council had accumulated 50 years of experience. Today, we have approximately 19 years of experience, with two council members having 18 years and the remaining council members having less than a year experience. I gained insight from past experiences that a management of the county extend beyond merely passing ordinances, resolutions, and ribbon-cutting ceremonies. The first day is an educational endeavor to aim at providing this council and the citizens with an overview of the incerties -- I shouldn't -- the incerties involved in running a county. I had none of this. I had a standard review of what was going on, but never in-depth. This is not an in-depth thing. It's be aware of what's going on. So, thank you very much. Andy, I would like you to take over.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thanks for being here this morning. Mr. Chairman said it very well, that we have a lot of different groups that we work with in the county. It takes a village, as the vice chairman has been heard to say before, to get things done. And this is a great opportunity for you to get to know those people in an informal environment, ask them questions, because I realize when we bring consultants or attorneys to you, you don't really know what the background is, what they do for the county, how long they've worked for the county, those kinds of things. So hopefully, we can break through some of that today, so you can put faces with names. And we have the presentations staggered out here to where we're hopeful that we allow about a half an hour in and out for each one of them. We should be able to break for a lunch, a working lunch around 11:30. And then, if everything stayed on schedule, we'd be out of here by about 2:30. So that's our goal today. I also wanted to tell you, it was kind of coincidental, but the vice chairman asked for some information, I think at the beginning of the month, requesting some information. One of the pieces of information he wanted was on vendors and consultants and so forth. So, we do have, at the end of your packet, is a list of consultants that we put together for you and what we've paid them over the last few years. So, I think that will be helpful. You can take it with you and study it a little bit. In your packet, there's also the presentations you'll see from your speakers today, get some background information about the organizations. Have I left anything out, Mr. Chairman?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Our first speaker is the vice chairman, Anne Marie Tamaracki -- Tabernak?
Tabernak.
Tab. I only know her as Tab, to tell you the truth.
Yes.
So, Tab, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me. Good morning. And you can please call me Tab. That's fine. I've been called lots of other names when I was a middle school principal, so feel free to stick with Tab. So, John was talking about how many years of experience. So, this is my third year on county council. So, I'm a newbie too. As you know, the first two years are a blur, and you learn a whole lot of things. Even though I studied county council for two years before I ran, you don't learn anything until you're sitting in the chair. So, this is my third year, and I was vice chair of the finance committee for two years, and now I am vice chair of the county council. We elected new leadership literally three weeks ago, and we're trying to regain the trust of the community. I'm not saying anything you all don't know. Our referendum did not pass with a rate of 55% no. And congrats that yours passed. I think it was great, and it would have been great if we had partnered for the transportation issues, but we're having to look at other ways to do that. So, we have a new administrator. He's not new anymore. He's six months in the job. That's fine. And he's, you know, getting his feet wet. So, we're just trying to move forward, and we would like to collaborate with Jasper County. I really don't know how much collaboration there was in the past, other than I know John from Sun City. So, I'm assigned as your liaison. Now, unfortunately, I think your meetings are the same time as ours. Mondays at 6:00. Yeah, Mondays are our days from -- they're horrible. Like, today, we're from 1:00 to 8:00. But I will be your liaison, so that means I get to watch your meetings after the fact, like I do Bluffton and Hilton Head. And I watch them like at 2:00 in the morning when I have insomnia and I can't sleep. So, then I would report anything back to council on your behalf. So, we have a lot of common issues with you, and I just made a list of them so I wouldn't forget. I mean, obviously, economic development's top on your list, but we have the infrastructure issues. We have the growth experience, Argent Boulevard. I just went past that this morning. It was all piled up on 278. And that's what I hear from my Sun City residents. I'm also vice president of the Sun City Board of Directors, so I hear all about Argent Boulevard because part of us is Sun City West. The 170 Triangle, which we have all been holding onto with, you know, hope, and now we don't have some funding, so we're having to work on that. So, the triangle's still an issue. I do love what our engineering department has done, moving people up 278 off 170. You know, it keeps going continuous through the light. And I'm still shocked at how many people miss it and drive over the cement barrier to get into the lane to go up there. I'm like, "What are you doing? You're going to bottom out your car." So, we're working on transportation issues, same as you have. I mean, there are no real boundaries between you and us, as far as there's no fences put up that, "Hey, you just left Jasper County. You just entered Beaufort." So, we also have hurricane evacuation safety's an issue, big issue for us, due to the density in our area. And I'm District 6, so I'm most of Sun City, all the way down to New Riverside. Very dense population. And these people are concerned about transportation, yet the referendum didn't pass, so we have to look at other things. We also are concerned with local transportation, so get people off the roads. Can you take Palmetto Breeze? Is there another way to get there? We're, as all of us are, we're looking at affordable workforce housing. And I see you have the Housing Trust Fund coming up. We participate in that, but we have other agreements with different groups. Access to medical care is very important for all of us, and you know the issue between BMH and Novant. I went to that meeting. And the other thing is hiring employees, and a lot of them are coming from Ridgeland. And we have people coming from Walterboro, even in Sun City, and paying them a livable wage and their benefits and retaining employees. But who wants to work somewhere where they can't get to? Okay, transportation becomes the biggest issue. So, all of those are on our docket. We have a few things we have to work on, needless to say. And the biggest thing is where are we going to get money for transportation? We also have a law enforcement center we are aiming to build. I don't know if it'll be in my lifetime or not. But we have the Cooler Tract, which you all know is right off of 170, but the funding for that, to build the law enforcement center is not there. There would be a detention center there, which we could co-op. So, that is in the balance too. One of the things we're trying to do to regain the public trust is move our meetings around. Beaufort, where we are now on Rybelle Road, is the center, is the administrative center of the county. It is really not the center anymore because the growth is south of the Broad. So, we're moving our meetings once a month. We're at Hilton Head Library, Bluffton Library, Buckwalter, Burton Wells. We're going to move around, because if you're a working parent, let's just say, which a lot of mine are in my district, how are you going to pick your children up from school, feed them, and get all the way out to the admin building by 5:00 for a council meeting? You're not. So, that eliminates your opportunity to participate fully. So, our meetings are pushed back to 6:00 now, and we're following the school district. And I don't remember if yours or not. I looked at your agendas too. We will do executive session before our meetings at 5:00, and then do our meetings at 6:00 so that people don't have to wait around for executive session to finish. We're also doing chat with council. I started those last year. We do those in Sun City once a month. We will be doing them throughout the county once a month, starting tomorrow. This is our first one at Bluffton Library. It is no agenda. Residents come. They can express a concern, make a suggestion, say something great the county's doing. I always stress that one. Or list a concern. That's fine. But it's no agenda. They get three minutes to speak, and we've had some large groups. We had two out of the four we did last year had over 50, 60 people. So, we're hoping people will come to that to express their opinion. We're still trying to gauge what happened with our referendum. I mean, I can offer my guess because I've heard from people, but, you know, we still have that issue. So, our goal is to work with Jasper County as our neighbor and our municipalities. We are just all in this together. The lines just blur. So, when everybody says, "Well, I live in Bluffton. I don't care about Beaufort County." Yeah, you do. Okay? "I live on Hilton Head. I don't care about Beaufort County." Yeah, you do. And so, 278 corridor is the first example of that. There's a meeting today. So, we're looking forward to working with all of you. If I can help you in any way, I mean, Joey knows me, John knows me. Anybody can call me, and I'm happy to meet with you. Alice and I, that's our chair, we are going to be meeting with each group. We just haven't gotten into it yet, but we'll be coming to meet with different people to talk about how we can collaborate and what needs we can help you with. So, happy to take any questions.
Yes.
I don't have 20 minutes.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, ma'am. So, what you're having is kind of like town halls? Is that --
Mm-hmm.
Are you having conversation back and forth with them or just letting them speak?
No. We are having conversations, because, and you already know this, I'm not going to say anything new. People are frustrated when they come to a council meeting--
Yeah.
--and you give them three minutes, run a timer--
Uh-huh.
--and then you say, "Thank you very much, John," and nobody does it right. There's no back and forth. So, these are like a town hall. We call it chat with council. It's very informal.
Right.
So, you can ask a question. Now, all the council members may not be at every one, because everybody's got a calendar, of course. There will be no administration or staff there.
Right.
So, nobody could say, "Well, I'd like to ask the administrator." The staff doesn't come, so it's only council. And then, if there's something we can follow up on for you, we will the next day. But it's a back and forth. It's not -- we're not going to argue with people, but we acknowledge we answer questions. Like, the first one we had was in Bluffton Library, and All Joy came. A lot of people from All Joy. Mr. Lawson's their council rep, and he answered a lot of questions. So, it's a back and forth.
I really like that.
It's very good.
Yeah.
I know everybody was a little anxious when I suggested it. They're like, "Ooh." But I do them once a month in Sun City, and it's, you just set your parameters in the front. Everybody, you know, like you do here. Be respectful. Take your three minutes. Say sign in. They put their topic, so you know what the hot buttons are. And we had four of them last year. Didn't have any problem at all. Any problem. And anybody that wanted to go on and on, like, we had a guy that went on about trees. We asked him to take it offline, and one of us met with him afterwards, so he doesn't, you know, consume the whole hour and a half. They go about an hour and a half.
Okay.
It's a lot of fun, actually.
Yeah, I would enjoy that. I think that's good.
Your residents will like it.
Yeah. Anybody else?
No, that was one of the things I just wrote down. I'd like to echo the same thing that he was just saying. I think that's a valuable tool, to be able to kind of get feedback from the community in more relaxed setting. And how received are the meetings with those that y'all have had so far?
Well, the first one we had at Bluffton Library, I'd say 60 people. It was a lot of All Joy people because it was sort of in their neck of the woods. We did one at Hilton Head. That library was packed, so I'm going to say 100. We did one at the Beaufort in our admin building. Couldn't even take all the people in. But that was during one of our controversial items, which I won't mention here. And we did two at the admin building. So, we rotate, like, we're going to do Bluffton tomorrow night, and welcome at 6:00. I don't know how many people will come. Everybody's still coming out of their cave from the snow, I guess. I don't know. I'm from Ohio, so four inches, like, who cares? Right? But anyway, our first one's tomorrow night, Bluffton Library. We postponed it from last week. Our next one will be, I believe, Burton Wells in February. And then, we go to Buckwalter, and then we go to St. Helena Library. So, it's like taking the show on the road. And it's not videoed. No staff is there. It's just a casual conversation with people.
And how do y'all publicize it as far as getting the word out?
So, it's on our website, where you can sign up to be advised of meetings and so on, and it'll say chat with council. And also, our PIO puts it out to everybody on the list. And then, like, I put it all over Facebook next door, and it just depends on what's happening that day, you know? So, I don't know. Everybody might still be snow -- I don't know, maybe they'll come tomorrow night. It doesn't matter. If there's 10 people or there's 100, we're happy to do it and talk to people and listen to people. It's like a listening tour, you know, just to be out there in front of the people you represent and hear what they have to say. So, I think it's great.
Yeah, I think it helps get people involved, you know?
And I think you might, the first one or two people might not know about it, but then the word spreads. Like I said, we have them once a month in Sun City, and depending on the topic du jour, like when we did this flagpole thing, we must have had 300 people. So, it just depends what your topic is, and if there's no hot topic, then people just come and talk about whatever they want to talk about. And believe this, the forum we had last year, people actually gave us kudos on some things. You know, "I love this," or "You redid this," or "You're doing a great job." So, it's not all negative, but you will hear people that have individual concerns, and those, we usually give them the three minutes and take it offline. Because if I'm having a problem with the permit department, I don't think everybody else needs to hear it. I can take it offline and follow through. So, it works very well. You do have to set your parameters in the beginning. It's not a free-for-all.
Anybody else? I just wanted to say that I invited Beaufort County here because I realized that, first of all, we're going to be regionalized. We have to be regionalized to save money--
Yep.
--if you want to do it that way. They do things that we couldn't do or can't do, and we do things that they can't do. So, and joint services and regionalization, very important. So, I thought everybody would like to meet, at least somebody from Beaufort County. Say hello. If you can call her, she answers the phone.
I do answer the phone.
Most of the time.
Well, unless I'm in a meeting.
Unless you call. No, unless you call back. You'll call back, but most of the time, you answer the phone. So, anyway.
And, you know, that's the other thing. We do want to collaborate with you because, as I said, there's no distinct fence between Jasper County and Beaufort County. We serve all the residents. Some of your residents come into Beaufort. Our residents come into Jasper. So, we all need to collaborate and work together. That's our goal. And, you know, I'm here, you contact me, and any -- so, here's the other thing we started. We tell, so, when Alice and I go to any meeting like this, every two weeks, we do a biweekly report to our council, so that everyone knows who we've talked to. In the past, we weren't aware who talked to who. So, now, in my biweekly report, which I write them, but when I do the next one, I will say, "I went to meet Jasper County Council," and explain, you know, different things. So, we are sharing that so that all -- we have 11 people, which is really like herding cats folk. You're lucky you don't have 11. But you have to keep everyone informed because we are one body, so no one makes a decision for anyone else. And we have been stressing that, and so then, we're going to make sure everyone knows who we're talking to and what we're talking to. Last week, we went to Port Royal. Here's an example. Port Royal and the city of Beaufort have these meetings once a quarter, where their council members and their administrator come to the meeting. So, they invited Beaufort County Council. Three of us attended. It was very good. We heard about what are Port Royal's priorities this year? What are Beaufort City's priorities? Because again, it's all the county, and they heard what are our priorities. So, and it was a public meeting. It's open. It's filmed. And so, anytime, you know, you want to have a public session and want to invite council members, those that can attend will, and we can have open conversation. Our goal with the new leadership is transparency, and everybody uses the T-word. I get it. But we are going to, you know, things are going to be videoed. They're going to be available to the public, and we're happy to come anytime. And we might be inviting you. We just haven't gotten our feet solid yet. It's only three weeks.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Appreciate you coming on the day of a meeting.
Oh, question me.
That's your question. The next person up is Heather Roth, Consulting. Before we get up there, Heather, we have breakfast--
Yeah.
--in the back, and we take five minutes. If anybody wants to go back and get breakfast, or coffee. I know Joey went through. Oh, no, you have still. Anyway, I'm going to go back. Anyway, I'm going to go back.
April of 2025. We're going to be looking at additional QAP program changes in May and August of 2025. And then we have our OZ renewals right around the corner. That's Senator Scottsville, and we're looking at that in 2026. And that is something that I worked on when we did that bill at the federal level. And so that's something that we need to look at for Jasper County. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Heather, can you tell me a little bit about the EPA grant? Exactly what that's for?
Sure. The EPA grant was an opportunity for us to apply for $20 million to the EPA for the Levy Limehouse community. We worked in conjunction with Low Country Council of Governments to get that written in a very short amount of time. We are partnered on that with Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority and a number of other community partners in order to execute. I believe that we landed at 170 homes would be part of a project connect sewer grants. Currently, that funding is under an executive order freeze by President Trump, but I'm looking for that freeze to be lifted. I'm expecting for that freeze to be lifted and for us to be able to, if we obtain the funding, to be able to execute on that. Yeah, I'm really excited about that one. And again, I presented on that last November, I think it was. I apologize, I don't have the date in my head, when we finalized that grant. And what I told that council at the time was we now have this amazing body of work with Levy Limehouse where we have videos, stories, photos. You know, writing an EPA grant is a huge lift, and we now have everything categorized right where it needs to be. So even if this one doesn't go forward, I talk to the RIA all the time, your staff works with the RIA, that's Rural Infrastructure Authority of the State of South Carolina. So there's going to be lots of opportunities for us to score on that one in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. So can you give me a little more detail on the housing lead?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that we're looking at, and Claude will be able to talk about it more, sorry Claude, I'm putting you on the spot, is the QAP, which is the Qualified Allocation Program for the Lytec Housing Credits with the State of South Carolina. So the feds trickle down those housing tax credits to the state of South Carolina, and then they set up a program where developers can apply in order to execute affordable and workforce housing initiatives. That QAP has not been favorable to Jasper County. In fact, our last allocation, I believe, was 18 years ago of those housing tax credits. Those housing tax credits are what developers use to chase these types of projects. And so, for instance, Florida has a very robust Lytec Housing Tax Credit Program, so a lot of developers go down to Florida and work within those confines in order to build affordable and workforce housing. That process in South Carolina is marginalized by a number of different, for a number of different reasons, and I can get into that at another time. But what you want to do is you want to set yourself up as a county to be extremely competitive in terms of that process, so that people pick projects in your county and pick projects that will work, that they, that will be able to pencil for them, and that they can get access to those housing tax credits. I've been working for the last three years to change that model for Jasper County to make us more competitive.
Good.
And there's a number of layers that go into that.
Yeah, I had a developer call me about that just the other day. Wants to have lunch on Wednesday, so.
Oh, great. Well, I'd love to brief you before your Wednesday lunch.
Yeah, we'll exchange numbers.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot of layers that go into that. And again, Claude and I have talked about this, Jennifer and I have talked about this. I'm really glad that they're here. They are kind of the lead for our entire region, and then it takes kind of all of us to parcel these deals together to make it, to make it work. Again, we have not been in a favorable position for Jasper County in 18 years. The changes that we made allowed us to get on the final development list for this last year. That developer chose to pull their project. It was based in Hardyville, but we were like right on that cusp of getting one of those projects. We need to make additional changes to the QAP. We have to in order for this to work for our county.
Great, thank you.
And it's a process.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate you. And I'm happy to talk to you before Wednesday.
One of the things you briefly spoke on at the beginning was light reduction.
Yes, sir.
Some of the bills that are out there. What are some of the topics they're talking about now and funding mechanisms for that? We've got a lot of light reduction that needs to be done countywide, not necessarily from an aesthetics point of view, but from an unsafe, derelict structure condition kind of building point of view. Can you speak on that real quick?
I can, very lightly. I will tell you that I worked on some bills, like I said in the report, where we have put tax credits towards light reduction bills, half a million dollars, $150,000. There's kind of an entire body out there that's working on converting hotels to affordable housing, converting hotels to workforce housing, converting hotels to J-1 Mesa housing, right? Right now, in the General Assembly, I'm not, there's nothing that's at the top of my head that's talking about more tax, tax bills for that delinquent housing. That was kind of a big one that was pushed through with Governor McMaster last year. So at this point, I don't have an answer for you, but I can absolutely dig into that.
Right.
Yeah.
Didn't we do that down in Hardyville?
You did.
You did. That one you did, bud. Yeah. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to say, we've had some, she said she tread lightly, but I'll go ahead before we're done in there. We've had some discussions here with staff about the potential for asking for a legislative request to start a pilot program to do some of what you're talking about, working with municipalities, perhaps the county. We're going with municipalities to try to clean up the gateways into the municipalities along 17, which both municipalities have come up with that. Right? They don't have control immediately upon their, their border, right? And we've got some derelict structures sitting right there, so we could unite, try to get some funding, try to tackle some of those things. We think that perhaps that could be a little of a model that maybe Heather could use to spin up some of the larger state legislation.
Saying that, is it that I'm doing this, is it Jasper has to be the forefront, or can it be the municipality by itself?
I think the teamwork would be the way.
I understand that, but for example, there's some things that like when you go for a grant, you have to go through us as a county.
Right.
Does that happen there?
It would be a legislative ask, what we're talking about, and coming from all of us would be the most of that.
Thank you.
And again, I hate to put Claude on the spot, but he knows a lot about this, so, you know, that, again, it's part of that entirety of the teamwork.
Are there any more questions? Thank you very much, Heather.
Yeah, and I really look forward to coming back and talking to you about the EPA funding. What I'd like to do there is do an entire presentation of how much we have, where it's coming from, what we've allocated, and where we want to go next, because we do have some staff members that are putting requests in, and so we need to, you know, get some feedback coming on that.
If you would, if you work with Andy and we can say something on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one other note while Heather's here. She has, works with this contraction, we do it annually.
Yes.
And her contract was up, it expired at the end of the calendar year, right?
Yeah.
So it was the worst possible time, you all were brand new, and so we had it on your agenda for your first meeting in January, which was awful, right? And so we pulled that. But with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and get that, talk with the chairman, try to get that back on, and subdue on the agenda so we can make sure that she's under contract.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Claude Hicks with the Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust. If you would, I don't know your presentation, but would you give a little bit of history of how it developed?
I would love to say I've set you up for that, but that's in fact, to my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Dick Stewart, and I'm the chair of the organization. That's Claude Hicks back there. He's going to come up in a few minutes and tell you about what's going on now. Appreciate the opportunity to give you a little history and evolution of how we got here. Back in August of 2021, a group of local governments got together, led by Jasper County and Beaufort County, joined by the city of Beaufort, the town of Bluffton, the city of Hardyville, the town of Hilton Head, the town of Portwell, and the town of Yancey. And following the Mesher Act, you formed the Housing Trust, the Housing Trust, Inc., we're going to be talking about. As part of that process, we did some work, and you included participation from Beaufort Memorial Hospital, Compass Custom Home, Beaufort Jasper County Realtors, Hilton Head Area Realtors, Hardyville Attaining, Attainable Housing Task Force, and the Jasper County Neighborhood Nineties to get the feel for it, it's longer than that, the streets. They reviewed some existing plans, along with representatives of the local governments, and those plans included Beaufort Housing Needs Assessment from 2018, the Jasper Journey Compromise Plan, Comprehensive Plan from 2018, the Town of Hilton Head Island Workforce Housing Plan 2019, Hardyville Housing Task Force 2019, Beaufort Low Country Regional Consolidated Plan 2018 to 2020, and interviews with stakeholders, Housing Needs Assessment for Jasper County from 2018, and the South Carolina Qualified Access Plan, which is a QAP that you've heard Heather mention just a few minutes ago. Out of that, they looked at the William Mesher Local Housing Trust Fund Enabling Act. The legislature passed this act, and the government decided to allow housing funds to create. And I want to distinguish here the difference for a minute between a fund and a corporation. We're now a nonprofit corporation. That fund has certain characteristics, and those characteristics were that it reminded the trust fund could be used for affordable housing only, and that limited it to 60% of adjusted median income. In our conversations with you and other folks, we knew workforce housing was a big issue then, and it's a big issue now. And the second thing is the limitation prevented that fund from being used for anything other than that. So that limited the activities that we could do to address the housing needs here, and it's a complicated problem. The implementation plan that Asperure Robinson presented as a result of these studies recommended the formation of a nonprofit. That nonprofit could then have a legal authority to do those things that the funds could not do. That plan put in place a mechanism to create the trust fund, which was done. The Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust Fund, Housing Trust, Inc. is the name of that nonprofit. Some people confuse the difference between a fund and a nonprofit. We're here to focus on where we're at today with this nonprofit and how we got here. So in August '21, Asperure Robinson came forward with this plan. In '21 and '22, the founding partners in the SLOCO agreement put in place this fund, and that regional trust fund, as I indicated, was limited to 60% AMI or less, affordable housing. They quickly realized at the state level that was inappropriate. That's already been raised 80% with a still limitation. In 2023, Beaufort County executed an agreement with Community Works, which is a Greenville-based nonprofit, to serve as a fiscal agent for the fund, because we, as advisory board members, did not have the legal responsibility or the authority that we would as board and directors of the nonprofit. Then in May of 2023, the nonprofit corporation that I just mentioned received our final approvals from the IRS and state, who are fully capable of operating. Then in October of 2023, Community Works said they liked to rely on and focus on their activities in Greenville. We still have a good relationship with them and work with them, but they no longer needed to be fiscal agents. So in January of 2024, the agreement with Community Works was terminated, and the Trust Fund, Trust, Inc. came into being as the operating party. And so at that time, one of the things we did, went out and recruited staff, as called for in the Asperure Robinson plan. And I'll turn it over to Claude Hicks, who's our lead person in that staff. If you haven't met him, I'm happy to tell you that he brings great experience, connections in South Carolina, working in the lowland states, came here from Pennsylvania, but don't hold him responsible for the recent weather. I'm pretty sure he had nothing to do. I'm happy to answer any questions, Claude, if you have any questions.
Can I get your name, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, it's Dick Stewart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for me today. It is nice to have a chair who knows everybody and knows everything about this area. So my tenure here since the first of April has been much easier than probably could have been or should have been. As Dick mentioned, the trust is, very simply, there to create and to preserve workforce and affordable housing in Beaufort and Jasper Counties. That is our very simple mission. It is a complex way to do it, from the perspective of how do you create housing? How do you take care of the workforce that is here, and some of which is leaving because they can't find a cheap enough place to live? That is a big challenge, but our mission is very simple. Our mission is really predicated around three basic definitions. Area median income is exactly what you would imagine it is. It is the median income of an area. HUD redoes that median income on an annual basis, but it is the point at which we look at housing, who can afford housing, how do they afford it, what does it cost? Workforce housing is defined as housing that goes up to 120% of area median income. Affordable housing is defined as 60% of area median income or less. So there's a very clear distinction between the two. And as Heather had mentioned, with respect to low-income housing tax credits, they are in the 60% to 80% of AMI category. So they are trying to strike the lower end of the income bracket, as opposed to projects such as in Hilton Head, which can go up to 150% of area median income. One of the things that HUD does and recognizes, and really it is a, an affordable and workforce housing definition, is the 30% affordability threshold. After many, 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 many years, and a lot of discussion, and a lot of governmental back and forth, the industry says that no one should pay more than 30% of their income for housing. So that is the way that they measure whether an area is effective or not. That is the way that we look at what does 30% mean in, in, in a particular area. It means something very different in Hilton Head than it is in a very smaller area like The area median income for Jasper County, at 60% of area median income, is $41,000. 120% is $86,000. That is not a big income swing when you look at how does someone afford to pay for rent in Jasper County, especially in areas that are growing, that are growing rapidly? How do they afford to pay rent when the average median income is that low? We'll share this presentation with you, or somehow you got lost in the technology jungle somewhere. One of the things that we learned recently, the Federal Reserve out of Atlanta did a study of this area, Beaufort and Jasper County. They looked at, over the last 20 years, for someone earning median income, looking to buy a medium-priced house and not spend more than 30% of their income, how many houses were actually in that category? Over the last 21 years in both Beaufort and Jasper County, the answer to that question is none. There's not been a single house that someone paying no more than 30% of their income, buying a middle-income house, could actually achieve that category, could actually achieve that house. More often, people are spending 40% to 50% to 60% of their income on housing. When you are doing that, you are not spending money on discretionary income. You are making choices about your car, about your food, about education, because you are spending so much on housing. We do three things currently at the trust, and we focus on three things. We do 100 things, but we focus on three. One is the creation of housing. We made a financial commitment, for example, to a new construction senior project in Beaufort, should be done by the end of the year. We made a commitment in Hardyville on the recent Habitat for Humanity project, 10 units. We provided all of the down payment assistance to all of the families for that project. We also are supporting the application for tax credits for another project in Hardyville that didn't quite, Heather referred to this in her remarks, it didn't quite meet the threshold. However, the city stepped up, gave land, gave some funds, gave some concessions on regulatory requirements, on fees, and on taxes, and we believe that this year, when that project goes in, it'll be in the top 10% of the applications that the state receives. Heather is exactly correct in saying this area has been deprived of tax credits and tax credit development for a long time. That has been for various reasons, but some of the biggest of which were rules that would apply in Greenville-Spartanburg, but wouldn't apply in Jasper County. For example, you had to have a certain number of jobs, 1,000, within a mile of a proposed project for it to be considered worthy of tax credits. No place, it wasn't any place in Beaufort or Jasper County that qualified. They've changed the rules somewhat, we're pushing them to change them even more. We're pushing them also to prioritize Jasper County because it has not received any tax credits in such a long time, but more importantly, because of the growth projection of Jasper County and the number of people who are coming into Jasper County looking for a cheaper place to live, looking for housing that is better than what they can find somewhere else. We're asking that those tax credits be applied to Jasper County. We received, in our first funding round this past year, 14 applications for funds. We granted eight of them. Six of those companies work here in Jasper County as well as in Beaufort County, Habitat for Humanity, and the hospital, et cetera. We have, by the end of last year, committed or expended around $2 million in funds to companies or grantees who did home repair, to grantees who did first-time home buyers' assistance, and to grantees who were looking to develop new or preserve existing housing. That is more than was anticipated, but we were fortunate in getting some state funding that allowed us to do that. It also includes the town of Bluffton, the town of Hardyville, wherever we look to see how we could put money into a project, how we could exert, excuse me, our influence, we could exert our ability and requirement to get things done. We are going to announce in the next 60 days a home repair fund exclusively for the city of Beaufort. They are putting up matching funds, we are putting up matching funds. Those are the kinds of ideas that we think have to be on the board, have to be on the table, in order for municipalities, in order for counties to really be able to move forward and to create workforce and affordable housing. We have recently gotten permission to become a sponsor of the state House Repair Fund. What that means is that in Beaufort and Jasper County, we will be able to submit applications for people who need home repairs to the state. They have a $20 million fund. We expect, we are going to take a class, we would have taken it last week, were it not for the snow. We have to get environmental approval that will allow us to look at any house of any age for home repair. We think that's going to be a significant difference. I will tell you that two years ago, that entire $20 million fund fixed one roof and one deck in Greenville, South Carolina, and nothing else. So we have asked our legislative contingent to put pressure on the agency to expend those monies, and we believe that they will start, and they have already started to really become more active in dispersing those funds. We believe that workforce and affordable housing has to be intentional. This is not a problem that's going to be solved by Washington. It's going to be solved by Washington plus the county, plus the municipality, public-private partnerships. It's going to take everyone doing everything. What are the top things that you could consider? Donation of land gets points on a South Carolina application. Looking at reducing taxes or putting a pilot program in for taxes is another thing that gets you points. Cooperation and collaboration between a municipality or a county and a developer gets you points. Those are the kinds of public-private partnerships and public-private endeavors that are going to be necessary to actually get workforce and affordable housing built. We have, we look at who it is that we are serving. We are serving those individuals and those families that are really either at the beginning of their careers, nurses, firemen, policemen, service workers, or those that are at the end of their working career, our senior citizens who many times have no place to go, have nowhere to look. We say something very simple. No housing equals no workers, equals no economic development, equals no community. When I said this when I first got here, everybody just kind of looked and kind of thought, very nice of you to say that, it's nice and catchy. The reality hit home two months ago when, on Hilton Head, McDonald's, Burger King, Panera Bread, and Whole Foods all announced they were closing because of the lack of the ability to have service workers in their properties and in their businesses. That's going to continue. We are looking, we're trying to help the hospital, who right now is relying, 30% of their nursing staff is temporary nurses. They can only stay for 120 days by contract with the federal government to supply nursing health. That is not the way that you grow a hospital, that's not the way you sustain a hospital, that's certainly not the way that you sustain a hospital for residents and citizens of the community. So as we look at this, we are absolutely grateful for our partnership with you. As one of our founding members, we really want to understand better what it is that Jasper County needs, what it is that is here and available, and how can we put some ideas in place to get some things done. We are absolutely looking forward to collaboration with you and to putting some workforce housing in the ground where people can put a key in the door and have a safe place to call home. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? I have a question. When, you know, I go to the planning commission, and sometimes the developer will say, it's going to be affordable housing. Do we, should we be sending them to you to verify that, or is that's part of your...
We have, right now, six developers who have come to us with ideas and proposals. Absolutely, you should be sending them to us, because we have the ability to find money for them that they may not know is there. We also can help litigate them. Someone comes in and says, we want to build 48 units of senior affordable housing, much like Carrington Manor did in Beaufort. They came in and said, we have a financial gap that we can't fill, and if we can't fill it, this doesn't get built. So the trust came forward, filled that gap, and that project will be open before the end of this year. So absolutely.
When we developed, or I was on SLOCO when we were developing, and minimum wage was always a problem, because Hilton Head has such a disparity to what Jasper. Is that a problem for you, to push people to Jasper County, to never profit, I mean, when profit comes in?
Wages and, so, affordable housing, in many cases, workforce housing is income-based. So you really are looking for people who can't afford the average rents, for example, in Beaufort. The average rent for a one-bedroom is now exceeding $2,100. The average rent for a one-bedroom is now exceeding $2,100, for a two-bedroom is exceeding $2,500, for a three-bedroom is almost at $3,000. A starting, two-year policeman and a wife that works still can't afford $3,000 a month. I mean, they can if they have roommates, they can if they sacrifice other things. So absolutely, you know, we would look at anyone who has an income and is looking for housing, we can help guide them. We are putting together, by the end of this year, a resource center that would be able to be online, where if someone is looking for something, they can go online, they can see what's there, they can see what's available. Right now, there's just not anything available. There just, it just doesn't exist. So the most recent workforce housing that's being built in Beaufort County, there are four applications for every apartment that they have. Okay, one person gets it, that's wonderful for them, but that leaves three people still standing there with no place to live. So anything we can do with respect to workforce and affordable housing, please, please call us, please rely on us to help.
Another question, other repair. How do you determine, or how do the people know in Jasper that that's going to be available if it's going to get built?
So we are working through conduits. We are providing money to grantees, and we can provide a list of all those grantees that do home repair, and they can call them directly. They can call directly, they can apply directly. We hope, once we get our allocation, or excuse me, our environmental approval to access for the state, they would actually come to us directly, say, "I need a home repair, do I qualify?" It is income-based, so it is between 60 and 80% of AMI and lower. It's truly a needs-based program. "I have a roof, I don't have $10,000, I don't make that much money, can you help me?" Yes, we can.
Does LowCOG, and this is a question for LowCOG, LowCOG has a similar program, don't they, with repair?
Yes, sir, that is done through the home program, and the structure has to be owner-occupied, it cannot be a landlord situation, it cannot be a mobile home, and so it's about $25,000 per unit. Now, the way this works is that the $25,000 maximum, it can only be spent on the unit if the unit can then be brought to code. The grant does not allow work to be done on a structure and then the structure is still not brought up to the proper code, meaning electrical code, the plumbing code, and so forth.
Do you know that?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I'm saying that is I belong to families in transition, and I'll give you a little story. We had a person come up and they needed help on their water bill, and we went, they went to one of the organizations and said, "We can't help you because we've already paid your water bill." And we were at the meeting, and the person says, "Why don't you come to me? I could have helped." And the other, another person said, "You couldn't come to me, I could have helped." They didn't know each other where it could help, they only knew one person, and that was the person that couldn't help.
I think that was one of the reasons that the trust was formed. All of those eight entities said to each other, and I will tell you, this is very unusual. I've worked up and down the East Coast and as far west as Arkansas, usually municipalities and government entities don't talk to each other, but in this case, those eight entities said to each other, "This would be better if we all did this from a regional perspective. Let's all pool our resources together, let's all work on this together." And so far, it has worked. And what we are doing is we are taking those resources and we are leveraging them the best way we possibly can.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I do, not really a question, I just wanted to try to help you out and let you know, you won't be here tomorrow, they're going to get into some other work tomorrow, but there are two items that we had talked about, previous councils had talked about, that they're going to be exposed to and talk about, or as a potential property donation from Jasper County. And also Jasper County has hookup credits for the Beaufort-Jasper water sewer, in previous grant projects. We have a certificate, we have those, that's sort of like cash on hand, and the idea was floated a few years ago, perhaps we should consider donating those as well, so that we can use those in the projects that are close to reach financial reality.
That's fantastic and greatly appreciated. The reality is, water and sewer costs right now are holding many developers back from moving forward, especially after this latest increase. So that would be terrific from two perspectives. Donated land helps, obviously, in an area where land is very expensive, but it also gives you points on an application. So that would be extremely, not only worthwhile, but advantageous, and we appreciate that very much.
Just to let, excuse me, just to let you know that it's postponed till March, that increase, postponed for a month.
Very good.
Just to let you know.
Mr. Chairman, also, one of the items that we had talked about before, and I don't know if there's any additional progress made towards it, but your group and certainly Mr. Stewart has, has said that they believe that you could really have an impact in the town of Greensland, and that currently the town of Greensland is not a participant in the trust.
So we have heard that. We have had a couple of meetings, kind of private meetings, about whether that would work or not. I can tell you that our entire board, which includes representatives from each one of those eight regional participants, would absolutely consider the expansion beyond Beaufort and Jasper County, to anyone who says, "We have a need, we, here's what the need is, can you help us?" Absolutely.
These councils are very community council, right, and they have friends there, so I was just thinking, maybe we could help facilitate a discussion with the town of Greensland, see what benefits might be available to them, and maybe that would be helpful for all of us.
I wonder who our representative is for Greensland?
Yeah, I'm sitting here thinking now, everybody that I met with last week, so...
Anyway, any other questions?
I do have one question. You said you're working with some of the builders that are coming in to try to facilitate some of the entry-level housing. I do know that from a standpoint, from where I stand, it's hard to recruit and retain entry-level workers to the area because whenever they look at the starting salary, which is pretty decent for a lot of places now for entry level, they look at the housing, they look at other things in the area, and that deters them from accepting a job offer. So you said you're working with some of the larger builders, or how is...
So in the case of the Habitat for Humanity, 10 units that was built in Hardyville, Farina builders came in and said, "If you will give us the land, you will give us some concessions on some of the regulatory requirements. We will bring those units in for $270,000 each." Those are 1,600 to 1,700 square foot townhomes, homeownership. That allowed Farina to actually get those built. We have other builders who are coming in, who are looking at opportunities. We get stuck on two things, cost of land and regulatory fees. Dick just reminded me, and I need to reinforce this with you all, the state, last year, gave us $3 million, over and above what each of the regional players donated, only because this was presented as a regional approach to the state. And the state looked at that as something that was highly unusual, but a wonderful sign for the future of this area, and they wanted to support it. We've asked for additional money this year, we will ask for money every year, but it's a sign that the regional process works. The regional process really allows for collaboration and communication unlike what you could do just sitting by yourself. So you are to be commended for that, for being a part of the trust, and we hope in the future we can expand it, we hope that the state continues to support us. And we are open to any and every idea, concept, discussion that we can possibly have to further workforce housing. You're exactly correct. Even if I want this job really badly, but I can't afford the housing, or it's an hour and a half to drive there, I begin to, everybody does it, you weigh the pros and cons, and you make a decision to go somewhere else. We want people to make the decision to come here, to stay here, to begin their families here, to live their lives here. We think it's important, we think that it's the only way for us really to survive. Hilton Head is facing a real crisis because they didn't really discuss this in any kind of serious way for decades, and now, you know, if you can't open business on Hilton Head because you can't get people, I mean, that is a huge...
Yeah, they're about 20 years behind the curve on that one.
They are, they are.
And it's been tried, I know there's been some developers talk about it, workforce on Hilton Head, but it's just, it's almost impossible, you know?
Well, they're trying, they're trying one project, they hope that it's going to get off the ground. I'm going later on in February to talk to Hilton Head themselves, to talk to their town manager, because before they even started, they already have a $2 million gap, because nobody asked the post office whether they could get an easement, and the cost of that easement from the post office is a $2 million new parking lot. So it is really hard to do, but it's super hard to do when you waited and waited and waited, and now you have all of these residents who pay pretty decent taxes, who have discretionary income that they spend at Hilton Head, to be told stores are closing because we can't find people to work in them.
So Section 8 housing is subsidized, or any of your funds used in that fashion?
Section 8 is a housing authority program. So the differentiation here is the housing authority is a local government-controlled entity that has given vouchers, Section 8 vouchers, from the federal government on an annual basis. They are in charge of finding qualified families, giving those qualified families those Section 8 vouchers.
So your organization doesn't subsidize in any way, you have other mechanisms, it sounds like partnering with developers and all that, but I didn't know if you were subsidizing any in a similar fashion to Section 8, but that was...
No, we don't, we don't do vouchers, we don't do any of that. That's housing authority.
More questions? I want to thank you very much. I think it's probably one of the most important COGS in the wheel. We don't have housing, we don't have people, we don't have people, we can't have industry, we don't have industry, we die. So, you know, this has to be a place to start. I was, when I started with LowCOG, I was just at the tail end of everything going on, and how important it was, but I also realized that there was a little Hilton Head, and Beaufort, and Jasper, and Hardyville, had a little bit of conflict because of one won one thing, one won another. And I commend you on getting that together, it's like bird and cat, I think, on that.
Some days.
But I think that we should all know that if we have any kind of, and we should, and they say affordable housing, that's a key to say, "Go to affordable housing."
Absolutely.
And make that a checkbox.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity. Our next presenter is Mr. Danny Lucas of LowCOG.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the county council again. You might wonder why I'm making the presentation for LowCOG, is because I am the vice chair for the Low Country Council of Governments, but I will be ably, more than ably assisted this morning by Stephanie Rossi, who is the transportation planning director, or the planning director, actually, for the Low Country Council of Governments. But to give you some background, the National Association of Development Organizations is the overall United States organization that handles development for the United States. It is a 501(c)(4) organization for the public benefit under the IRS Code. The whole idea of regional collaboration for planning, for infrastructure, and for all that concerns a particular region and space, this whole effort started in 1947 with the Atlanta Metropolitan Regional Commission. Back then, it was just Atlanta, Fulton County, Decatur, and DeKalb County in Georgia. Now the Atlanta Regional Commission is 20 counties, and its focus today is the same as it was back in 1947, working for infrastructure needs, working for community collaboration among those member counties and the cities within. So the National Association of Development Organizations then was formed, as I said before, as a C4, 501(c)(4) organization in 1967. The Low Country Council of Governments was formed in 1971. So it's important to see the timeline of how these regional collaborations actually occurred. So what we do here in South Carolina is not an accident, it is actually a national plan. So the federal government funds a lot of its, funds a lot of its grants through these council of governments or regional development centers, they're called by different names in different states. And so now NATO represents over 500 regional development councils in the United States. And LowCOG, by the way, is a very active member in the National Association of Development Organizations, because Beaufort and Jasper are fast-growing communities in South Carolina and in the country, as well as Myrtle Beach. LowCOG is comprised of a 26-member board of directors. It is 10 members from Beaufort County, representing Beaufort County and its municipalities, six members from Colleton County, representing Colleton County and its municipal members, five members from Hampton County, representing its county and municipal members, and five members of the, or five members from Jasper County. So that's how we get to 26 board members. And then there's an executive board of the chair, the vice chair, secretary, and the treasurer, and then there are numerous committees that, such as aging, such as transportation, LATS being one of those, that work on specific functions. And of course, the board is ably, more than ably assisted by its staff at Low Country Council of Governments. I've been working with Ms. Brandy Graham since 2008, when she was the Hampton County Administrator, and so she's uniquely qualified as our executive director because she knows the lay of the land, but she also knows how it is from a staff perspective, and then she knows what the challenges are from the elected officials' perspective. I've also worked with Michelle, she's our community development director, I've worked with her also since 2008, and she knows virtually all there is worth knowing about grants administration as well as grant applications. And so while we're talking about grants, I want to give you two examples of how it is that we work in LowCOG to provide assistance to the member cities and member counties. We like to use this whole example of Hilton Head, of 45,000 people perhaps that live there on a permanent basis, but during the tourist season, there are 100,000 people that are there on that island. Now, if there were an occasion to have to evacuate... Now, if there were an occasion to have to evacuate, the only way to evacuate is by US-278. US-278 flows through Jasper, and it flows through Beaufort on the way to Hilton Head. So unless you arrive by boat or by aircraft, the only way to evacuate or to get to Hilton Head is by way of US-278. And so that highway flows through, in fact, the highway flows all the way back to Atlanta and goes on further than that, because it's a US highway. But the point I'm making here is that Lococ does all it can to help collaborate, whether it be for grants or whether it be for other things, to assist the four counties and the municipalities within. I'd also like to make mention, you heard Ms. Raff talk about the EPA grant that we've applied for. It's a $20 million grant, and we hope that it will assist 120 homes to, that is, to get them off of the, to remove them from the septic tanks and put them on public sewer. So this is a two-phase project. The grant would be for connection fees, and as well as a hookup for the sanitary sewer system, which will then be constructed and managed by the Beaufort-Jasper Water and Sewer Authority. There is water already available in the Levy Limehouse area. We're trying to close a loop now by having this grant pay for the public sewer, so that we have water and sewer in that area. From a staff perspective, it's our hope that we can remove as many residences as possible from the septic tank systems, especially in those areas where the soils and the water tables do not support the sustainability of septic systems. And so once again, that's what this grant is for. And the reason why it's an Environmental Protection Agency, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency grant, is because the U.S. EPA is very concerned about resiliency. So in our case, we're trying to build or increase resiliency to combat climate change and the storms that may be caused or increased as a result of climate change, however climate change occurs. And so this collaborative effort, staff just thought it was a very good idea to try to apply for this grant in order to reduce the incidence of septic tanks and septic tank failures in Jasper County period, but starting with the Levy Limehouse area. And so Lococ staff has written the grant with the aid of Heather Raff Consulting. Ms. Raff's position in this is to try to position us in the best way possible to actually receive the grant, because most grants in the United States are now really quite competitive. So we have to find ways to position ourselves as high as we can to the forefront to receive these competitive grants. And so that's what we're trying to do there. So the idea is to weatherize these 120 homes and to provide the hookup between the public sewer system and then the plumbing system inside of the house. So what that means is we have to bring the plumbing system inside the house up to code. Because as I mentioned earlier with the home program, we cannot just do a partial upgrade of a structure. Whatever we do as government or government agencies has to leave the house in a position in which it is, it meets the current building code. So I want to make that point clear. And the idea here is to make these 120 homes, approximately 120 homes, make this mandatory that they actually do the hookup to the Beaufort-Jasper Water and Sewer Authority. It is not cost-effective to have 10 or 12 do it and the other 100 not to do it. So one of the requirements of this grant process is that the entire community consent to hooking up to the Beaufort-Jasper Water and Sewer Authority. So those are two examples that I wanted to use as examples of what Lococ actually does for the four counties of Colleton, Hampton, Beaufort, and Jasper. So with that, I'll bring up Stephanie Rossi, and she will talk to you specifically about the Low Country Area Transportation Study. Study is probably the wrong word for it because it's a continuing effort. It doesn't just take a snapshot of our area transportation needs. But also endemic to our transportation efforts, there was a rural component that focuses just on rural areas and how it is that we might diversify transportation and transportation needs. You heard it spoken earlier that Palmetto Breeze does a lot of work for our transportation efforts here. When we talk about affordable housing, the Palmetto Breeze transports people from Allenville County, Bamberg County, Barnwell County, Hampton County, all passing through Jasper County, on the way to Beaufort County, on the way to Hilton Head and Bluffton for those jobs. And that is the central focus of the Palmetto Breeze bus outfit. So I'm just giving you an example of transportation efforts that have been sponsored and helped along and assisted ably by the Low Country Council of Governments. You've heard it said that it's almost impossible to bring forward, to recruit workers, and to keep workers if there is not affordable housing nearby, reducing the distance between the job site and the residential site. So if we talk about the increased cost of residential housing, but there's also an increased cost of transportation. So a lot of people are strapped with this whole idea of they spend more than 30% of their discretionary income on housing. Then if you look at the cost of transportation, they've spent well over 56% of their income just on working and getting to work. So this whole idea of affordable housing is almost intractable, but it is something that all of us are working diligently on. But I can tell you that from my point of view, the chief impediment to affordable housing, wherever it is, is in fact, local government. There are a lot of rules and regulations and zoning and so forth that are hurdles for the developer to overcome. A lot of people think that the developer is the person or the group that keeps affordable housing from happening. Well, the developer is only one part of the problem and one part of the solution. So in March of 2023, did a presentation to this Lococ board called Impediments to Affordable Housing. I'm scheduled to do a revised version of that to the Low Country Council of Governments' board sometime this spring. But I also like to do the same thing for the Jasper County Council and just outline what we can do as a local government to grease the wheels and help the development community to provide affordable housing to us. But then it goes beyond affordable housing. That's what we call the missing middle. We are trying to attack affordable housing, but then there is the housing for the upper middle class and so forth. But who gets squeezed a whole lot in this is what we call the missing middle. They don't have the same advocacy groups as the others. And so there's an effort that we need to attack, meaning all of us, to provide more housing or assist for provision of more housing for the missing middle. The teachers, the firefighters, the doctors, the public workspeople, the nurses. Because we as local government selfishly, we need to be able to attract and to retain those workers for our own benefits. And they are in the missing middle, and we have to find ways, or at least some of us would suggest, that we have to find ways to make life easier for those people to get here and to stay here. So with that, I'll bring up Ms. Rossi, and she'll talk to you more specifically.
Before you, Ms. Ross, before you get up, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have a question?
No.
So you said 128 houses have been identified for this project?
Approximately 120 houses. I'm not quite sure about the exact number, but it's approximately 120 houses that we've identified in the Levy Limehouse area that we'd like to run the public sewer to bring them on to the public sewer and get off of the septic tanks.
And so I guess some sort of agreement between the owner would come into play if the owner has to upgrade their sewer system or their internal plumbing to get this grant funding, right?
The upgrade will be paid for with proceeds from the grant.
And that could be various depending on what the upgrade, some might need it, some might not?
Correct.
So I'm wondering if that area would expand or contract, because you don't really know your cost upfront on that 148 houses?
What we plan to do is to use the available funds to weatherize those 120 or so houses. Weatherize, I mean, not winterize, but to weatherize those 120 houses, including upgrading the plumbing system so that it connects properly to the public sewer system. And out of that $20 million, we have adequate funds to do just that.
Just that, okay. Not bringing everything else up to code?
No, sir.
Because, you know, some of these houses may be older.
We're talking about weatherization to stop the roof from leaking, because the roof, if the roof is leaking, it ruins everything else. And we're talking about upgrading the plumbing system, in this case, to hook up directly to the public sewer system.
You, the ElCog has more than just what you talked about. They have meals and wheels, correct? They have housing. Is there a housing? There's different, whatever, departments?
Yes, there are many departments.
Can you just really quickly go over that, just so we know what they actually do?
Ms. Rossi will come up and she'll talk specifically about the different departments that Lococ actually has. So we have a way in Lococ, and the other council of governments are similarly situated all across the country. But we have a way to address the infrastructure, the social, the community development needs of its member jurisdictions.
So Mr. Lucas already covered some of the history of ElCog and its establishment from back in 1971. So I'll go through that a little quicker. You know, our mission statement for the entire agency is improving lives of Low Country citizens through client programs and services to local governments. So we are at your service, essentially. And I'll cover really high level, because this is really Sabrina's presentation, and then we break it down by department heads. And my slide, I have three slides that I usually cover. So I'm trying to cover the entire thing really fast today, but I'm not the expert in any one of these specific areas except planning and transportation.
This is what it's for. It's not for in-depth, as much as it's...
Yeah. And this, this presentation itself is offered to our newly elected officials and anybody who wants to revisit it. Usually in March, we'll offer this out, and Sabrina will be sending out information about this. So the different departments that ElCog has, as one is community and economic development, which Mr. Lucas covered quite a bit, that's where you would find sewer upgrades and those types of programs that are related to HUD, EPA, your entire alphabet soup of grant opportunities that are out there from federal agencies. Aging and disability is another one of our program areas. Workforce development, planning and transportation. And then admin and finance, that's really more of an internal function within ElCog. So really quickly on aging, the goal of the department is keeping our older adults living safely and independently at home as long as possible, and giving them those tools that's necessary to make well-deformed decisions about their health and wellness. So I'm just gonna go really quickly over all the programs, because there's a lot of them. This is our largest department at ElCog. We have a family caregiver program, a home care program, minor home repair and safety. So this is different from the other home repairs that Danny was talking about. This is smaller things like maybe putting in like a ramp or something to help a senior get, make their home more accessible to them. Insurance counseling, information and referral services, senior nutrition. So that's where you'd find like your home-delivered meals, assessors, legal services, and then long-term care resident advocacy. Workforce development, this kind of serves two different programs. The program kind of has two different sides. We have our employer services that we offer to the employees, or employees seeking, those seeking employment, and to the employers. So those, we have on-the-job training programs focused at youth, on-the-job training and youth work experience, as well as occupational skills training, and those are free and at no cost. And the areas that they are focused in are technical, healthcare, culinary, manufacturing, and then transportation distribution logistics, like getting a CDL license, that type of thing. And then on the other side, the business services, this is how we would serve the employers. We host job fairs, recruitment opportunities, incumbent worker training, and on-the-job training, employer reimbursement program. So if they are offering an on-the-job, we get someone hooked up with an on-the-job training program, we're helping get that employer reimbursed for offering that program. Also do free job advertisement, extended no cost to HR departments and employment screening. And then this is my department. We offer a variety of services to our municipalities and counties, such as maybe offering, we help out with doing comprehensive planning, smaller projects, it might be like a marketing study, we've done mapping projects, basically projects that some of our smaller municipalities don't have a planning staff, and we kind of act as their planning staff for project-specific reasons. We also have the Low Country Community Indicators Dashboard. So this is a great tool that you can go to and visit and get up-to-date population information, lots of socioeconomic data, and this covers the four county region. And then it's broken down by county. We don't have it broken down by municipality, but it is broken down by county. And then we also offer services and have done grant and projects related to the environment, such as we do the four county hazard mitigation planning. We're about to start that. Fingers crossed our grant comes through this coming month, and we'll get, working on that. We do the 208, water quality management, 208 approvals. We've done some watershed planning and a military installation resilience review focused on our Marine Corps installations up in Beaufort County. And then transportation planning, which I'll talk a little bit more in-depth about, but we do transportation both. We have a urban pot of funding, which is what I was going to talk about with LATS, and then a rural pot of funding. We are allocated $5 million for our rural area annually to put towards transportation projects that are, have been vetted through our long-range transportation planning process. One example of a project that you probably have all seen is US-17. That was funded in partnership with LATS and ElCog's rural, they pooled together funding for many years and built that project. So we have just kind of out of, I want to say, out of debt. We've been, we borrowed ahead to pay for this project, and we are now in the process part where we can start funding projects again because we have paid back what we owe for this, US-17. So, skip that one. And then this department is what Danny was talking about, community economic and development. This department offers a lot of services in terms of helping and assisting writing grants for different municipalities and counties and working together in partnership on those. They also work, they have the Affordable Housing and Home Consortium responsibility and some other programs, and keep small business revolving loan fund and the Low Country Regional Development Corporation. And the next, if you have this in your slides in your pockets, are some examples of before and after of some of the projects they have done, but just some accomplishments, just to kind of highlight the types of projects or how many they have activated at any given time. For example, you can see that 29 CD, beachy projects totaling about $15 million, 16 home projects, 10 EDA. And you can kind of see that, again, the alphabet soup is down there. They have been working across the region and finding grants and partnerships to work on these. These are some of the examples of some of the projects. And these are some of the examples of some of the projects that they have worked on. And, and contact information is probably the best part here because if you want more detailed information on any of those programs that I'm not associated with, these are the people you need to reach out to. Um, our workforce director, that, uh, needs to be updated, but you can reach out directly to Sabrina and she would be, um, the main contacts of that. And then here is all of our website, um, and social media information as well.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might, while we're talking about LowCOG, I want to make one request. There is a vacancy, uh, in one of the committees for LowCOG, it's the LATS planning committee, uh, LATS Policy Committee, so we need a Jasper County elected official, uh, to serve on that committee as the focal point for what we do with the Low Country Area Transportation Study. Uh, as we tried to mention earlier, uh, the stuff that we do in transportation with LowCOG is critically important to the development of, uh, the, the four counties, but specifically, uh, and most critically Jasper County and Beaufort County.
Without further ado, I think I'll be at least going to it until we make a decision on, as a captain, but I've been going to it for a while.
Do you want me to talk about LATS a little bit?
You can talk about LATS now.
I can go pretty fast with this one, this one I've been doing for 25 years, so. So, um, as you've already met me, I'm the, oh, can you put it in the slide mode? So I'm the planning director, of course, I've, um, been doing transportation planning, MPO specifically, transportation type planning for 25-plus years. Um, I've been with Alcoa for four and a half years. So what is an MPO? The Metropolitan Planning Organization is required by the, um, federal government, by USDOT, for any urbanized area which reaches a population of 50,000 or more. So that designation comes out every 10 years, once we get the census, the census kind of draws some lines and designates an, um, metropolitan pla- uh, uh, an urbanized area. This is not something that we get to draw those lines on the map, we get to refine them, but sometimes the lines are a little different than the way you might think they should be, but, um, what we get to do is, once that designation comes into place, we are required to form a Metropolitan Planning Organization that focuses on this comprehensive cooperative and continuing process for transportation planning with federal, specifically with federal transportation dollars. Uh, the Low Country Area Transportation Study, or LATS, is what we have designated here for our, um, as our MPO. Um, uh, in the state of South Carolina, they all have study after them. That's kind of like a, some, and when some states, some states do it that way, some don't, it's, um, but I guess everybody in South Carolina has, considers there's like a study area. Um, the actual urbanized areas that were designated that required, that triggered this requirement was left in Hilton Head, um, reached in 2010, the 50,000 threshold, or was over that. And in this most recent urban, um, US census, the Beaufort Port Royal area also has been designated an urban area because again, so we don't get to go draw those lines and there's a big body of water in between us, they doesn't, they gave us two separate urban areas. Thankfully, we were already within, they were already included within the boundary of LATS, so we didn't have to go and create a second MPO. And it, it gets a little redundant at that point if you're doing all the same requirements. You can go to the next slide. Um, and here's some examples of some of our requirements. But the MPO supports the national transportation goals and, um, each of these different transportation acts as they come out is kind of, you know, may fluctuate what some of our emphasis areas are, but it's been pretty consistent since the early 1990s with what transportation MPO requirements have been. Next slide. So this is, um, the way the South Carolina state looks, you can see that the, uh, and pretty much the COGS are outlined, so there's 10 COGS in the state and then there's 11 MPOs. And then, and again, those MPOs are triggered by a population number, so they are then required. Uh, LATS down at the bottom, you can see our boundary, we did not change it within the most recent census because we had already included Port Royal and Beaufort within our boundaries. And our boundaries, we, um, we include all of Hardyville, or the urbanized area is in Jasper County, but we do not, it does not go all the way out to Ridgeland. Uh, the, the committee meets every other month and then our voting members, we have representation from each of the county, counties Jasper, Beaufort, Palmetto Grease, so their board member has a voting seat, and then the town of Port Royal, Hilton Head, left in, cities of Hardyville and Beaufort. That, I'm sorry. So there's four, uh, requirements that the MPO is responsible for, is long-range transportation planning, transportation improvement program, uh, an annual unified planning and work program, and then we have a public involvement plan. The long-range transportation plan is sort of like, um, a community's comprehensive plan. This is a 20-year look at transportation needs in the region and it's sort of like the blueprint of what we're gonna use for, uh, planning for the next 20 years. We do update it every five years, so we don't just, uh, do it and then wait 20 years. It's something that's updated every, uh, every five years. We just adopted our most recent one in 2022 and I'm starting the process because it doesn't get updated overnight, it takes about a year, two, year and a half to actually update it and go through procurement and everything. I'm backing my time up, so I'm gonna start looking at, um, kicking off the next update soon, within the next year. The transportation improvement program is a shorter term, four and a half, four to 10-year project list of projects that have actually received funding. So they may have received funding from the MPO itself, the MPO is allotted $8.5 million annually for transportation projects, but there are other projects that are in our tip, if you've ever wanted to look at it, it's giant spreadsheet. It also, has to include all federally funded project, projects. So there are projects in our region that are federally funded, but that money's coming through the state. And so that is something we don't necessarily have a lot of control over how they're financed, they have safety programs like Interstate 95, that is in our tip. The MPO funds are not being used for that, they are using their, the state's interstate funds. So there's a lot of different types of programs within the tip, um, but the long-range transportation plan directly relates to how we spend that $8.5 million in the program in this transportation improvement program. Go to the next slide. Unified planning work program, that's kind of more like a management tool used internally for the MPO staff, so myself and my department, and to look at what transportation activities and tasks we'll be taking out. Um, everything needs to be public and identified, and this is just identifying all how we're spending those planning dollars and what we're doing for the next year. Last slide, um, this is looking at our public participation plan. We just updated that, uh, this past, uh, fall, yeah, in 2024. And the goal of that is to provide the public with an appropriate amount of tran- information on transportation planning services and project development in a way that's timely, but also allows them a way to provide input and feedback to us. So we, um, update that as necessary. Our most recent update was mostly related to, uh, offering things like virtual options. Things, times have changed a little bit in the last five years on how we reach the public, so we address that in this. Uh, the next slide is, uh, if you're more of a visual person, but I want to see, these are the, the, the four plans I just talked about and how they work together. We have our long-range plan, kind of our starting point and how that feeds into the other efforts. The transportation improvement plan, that, again, that's where the funding, once projects have a program with funding, that then feeds into the state's transportation improvement program. So once it's in that, it, it can be, projects can then move forward. The last slide here is a, um, list of projects that currently are in Jasper County that do have funding in the transportation improvement program. I've talked with Jim and we worked, we'll, we'll be talking more about how these projects and the funding that's in here, because these are not completely funded projects, these are funding a portion, um, these are $1,000, so that's really a million dollars, about $1,000 and et cetera, but, uh, we have PE dollars on several of these projects that you just received funding through your penny tax, so there'll be a little bit of money there to supplement some of those projects and we can talk about those more as we move forward. Then my contact information's on this.
Is there any questions?
So in summary, uh, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, two things.
Just quick.
No, it's more of a state than anything. I will say, with the transportation and work with LowCOG, I've had the opportunity to work with them for the last 25 years on different areas and facets and different things. It's been a very valuable resource with a lot of the programming and some of the things that they offer there, so, um, they definitely are a great resource to us in the county.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just, uh...
Can I just add one question? I'm sorry. I just want to let everybody know, and I don't think anybody even realizes this, but the, uh, LATS gave all their money to Route 17 from Savannah River up, so all that was done by LATS. And now I just think there is an act of great thing. Now we just got that little portion to go.
Yeah, a little bridge to deal with to get over the Savannah River. We're still talking to G-Dot about that, about how much that's gonna cost.
But I just wanted to just bring that out, that you do have that importance. Thank you. Thank, I'm sorry.
So in summary, I'd just like to say that, uh, LowCOG does what the US government and what state governments like to see done, and that is regional collaboration for regional problems, uh, or regional challenges. So I mentioned a transportation challenge earlier, but, uh, drainage, drainage basins do not adhere to political boundaries. So solutions to problems of drainage, uh, require collaboration, and so that's what, uh, what, what LowCOG likes to do. Michelle Knight is the Director for Community Development Services, I mentioned her earlier, I just didn't give her last name, but she knows about all there is to know about grants. The EPA grant is a new, uh, grant application for us. Uh, normally we do a lot of community development block grant type scenarios, but now we're getting more into the EPA FEMA as well as Economic Development Authority grants on a federal, uh, level. And so either we need to contract more with, uh, Ms. Knight and her crew, or hire our own grant writer and administrator, but, uh, it, it is more, um, uh, cost-effective at this point, uh, to have LowCOG, uh, provide the grant administration and grant writing services for us.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
I wanted to say, uh, one quick thing, mentioning a lot of different services that they provide, just real quickly, down in very last few years, practically, um, LowCOG was instrumental working with us with a community development block grant that paid for some of Marsh Code Fire Station, okay, real, uh, simple project that was helpful. Uh, they also last year, uh, did something a little out of box, helped us create an equal employment opportunity plan, which we had been lacking for many, many years. And so they did that for us, and as, uh, Mr. Lucas alluded to, they're currently working with us on that brick grant, which is the FEMA grant for, uh, countywide stormwater. And so we're excited that they're working on that for us.
Thank you. Our next up, I don't see Danny Black here. Anyway, who's gonna be to present?
Both of us.
Then both of you come on up.
Botsy. Danny has the floor. Don't want him here.
Don't confuse me. Anyway, you're up.
Great.
South Carolina, regional development.
We like it when people say it that way, Southern Carolina Alliance, but the consultants all speak South Carolina. Sometimes we get called instead of the state, and that was purposeful marketing of our group.
Regional development.
Way before I was there, but that was, we'll get calls. Can you show us something in Greenville? No, we chose Southern County.
Yeah, why don't you say yes and just bring here?
There you go. Has Kay reached out to Chris or Joe about, um, an overview of Southern Carolina Alliance? She, she does a presentation that takes 30 minutes to an hour that's a little more in-depth, has she reached out at all?
No.
Kay?
Not yet, because she's working on the retreat first and then we have new councilman orientation.
So this is just a general overview of SCA and then Kay will reach out and...
Just, just to let you know, this is what it's for, an overview so we know what you do.
Yeah, yeah, we have a small overview, but she...
We can ask questions later.
With new councilmen, she likes to do one-on-one, um, with each county, so yeah. But SCA, Southern Carolina Alliance, we're a seven-county Regional Economic Development Association, we are a nonprofit and our primary goal is marketing and industrial recruitment. So we go all the way up to Barnwell, Allendale, Hampton College, and Beaufort, and that's where, of course. So just our overall mission throughout deals of cooperation and regionalism to sustain and create jobs that will improve the quality of life from the counties of the Southern Carolina region. We accomplish that through, as I said, marketing and industrial recruitment, product development, and community and workforce development, specifically workforce, uh, has been a big topic of discussion lately, as you all know, the, uh, workforce can be a challenge everywhere, so we are trying to spearhead that within the region as well, to get that, um, to have the best workforce we can, to offer the companies that we show the properties to.
So what Taylor didn't do was introduce himself. I'm John Fleming, Southern Carolina Alliance, been with the Alliance about eight years. Prior to that, I was a civil engineer and worked in Jasper County, Beaufort County, all throughout the state. Um, but we, you know, Southern Carolina is your economic development arm, we appreciate your confidence that you placed in us to do that. And part of that is, every county is a part of the Alliance, from government employees, industry representatives, um, you know, administrators are all ad hoc on our board, but we are, we are working for you, for your county, and have a board that is very diverse, about 46 people on the board, like I said, county, but we also have private representatives, like some of the folks you're having lunch with, I saw your lunch list, a lot of those folks are on our board, and some of those folks are on our board as well, so that we have diverse input from a board perspective, not just from the county's perspective, and not just from what we're thinking we get that overall group. There's a list, so, it looks like more than 46, but it's only 46 people, uh, who are our board members, appointed members, partners, executive committee. We're set up to where we have a full board, but the executive committee in our bylaws, which means every month has a building to make decisions, so that we, that we have quarterly meetings for the entire board, certainly exactly ratified by the entire board. Marty Salz is our current chairman and Senator Brad Haddo is the current executive chairman. That's who you get, I hate putting pictures up there, but when you call Taylor, you're actually getting everybody on this list. Taylor is your, uh, Jasper County Project Manager, but you get all of us when you're calling Taylor, and that's how we want it to work, so that you don't have all of our experience and history to work on all of this.
Yeah, so just as an overview of what, uh, we've been able to accomplish as a team in Jasper County with the support of county staff as well as, so since 2020, the beginning of COVID, we've had 248 million and 977 jobs announced in Jasper County, and actually the bulk of, of over a quarter of 2024 announcements were in Jasper County, with 108 million as a region and 408 jobs as well. So just as, just kind of a, one of the big companies we've located, uh, we've helped locate is a Fortune 500 builder, builder's first source that took on the Point South spec building, and they have over 126 employees and are fully operational. So a great success story, we like to touch on when we have companies coming to town.
And that success story was, again, a partnership from everybody because that property, we, we acquired the property, we had a development partner build the building, but Jasper County was involved in helping us with, you know, some road work to make sure that intersection was good, to support the companies that come in, so it takes the entire team to create these opportunities for them, folks to come in. They, and without product, a lot of times, you know, trying to get them to come in and look, and that's what I said, this one was a huge teamwork project, and they all are.
Tyco is the, one of the oldest manufacturers in the county, it's been here since 2004, and they are up to 250 employees and now make their, uh, a EV truck as well using a Volvo drop train. train. I think we touched on it on the last meeting. They are up to three buildings within the Cypress Ridge Business Park, so they are, you know, a great success story within the county. They kind of have ebbs and flows with the market, as a lot of industries, but they, we've seen them continue to gain traction. They're up to three buildings now, and their most recent purchase of the Ohio Grading Building, they're putting a lot of funds into navigating ready for their next steps as well.
Again, we talked about partnerships, groundbreaking November, out at the Salt, South Atlantic Logistics Terminal, which was part of a piece of property that Southern Carolina identified, again, too big for us to be able to maintain the entire property. And so we partnered with a developer, went out for RFQs, found a developer that was interested in aligning their vision with the county, and in this case, with Hardyville, to create job opportunities and yield opportunities. That's a natural growth corridor, but we didn't want to lose control of that piece of property. There's a lot of backstory to that we can talk about, that was the reason we needed to bring in a development partner. But all of those partnerships are what we're doing. What we're also always looking at is how do we continue to advance the entire region? We've got, you know, public-private partnerships, we kind of just talked about two of those, port-related, and we've got a port-related project that we're working on now. Obviously, proximity to the Jasper, Jasper County into the Savannah Port creates a lot of opportunities for us to have folks looking at it. And again, working partnership with both sides of the river, you know, we have projects that are looking at both states. You remember, you're competing on a global scale. You have a project that's in, we had a project, actually, that was in Georgia, and then they came over here and visited here. We really wanted to see the Georgia port. We know we're going to see the South Carolina port, but we would have liked to see the Georgia port. Well, I made a phone call, and the next day, we had it with the Georgia port. So we have, we have to maintain and keep those relationships, because they are located in Jasper County, no matter how much we want them to go to the Charleston port. They're really going to use the jet to Savannah Port, and everybody realizes that. There are credits that will offset their costs to use the Charleston port, but they don't, you can't offset the time to do that. Advanced manufacturing, that is everything we look at today. So we're continuing, that robot that picks tomatoes, I can't pick a tomato in my backyard without messing it up, and how that thing does it, I don't know. But we have seen those. Skills enhancement, Taylor touched on it, that's the biggest thing we're doing. It's not traditional economic development, what we normally do, what you think of, but because we've been so successful, and there are so many companies, and the advanced manufacturing, we're having to work much more closely with TCL, USC, to get the program that the new manufacturers are looking at. And they're great partners, but the skills are changing rapidly. Here, we've talked about, you know, these parks, Taylor didn't talk about.
Yeah, so along with the, John touched on the people partnerships, so Highway 17 has been booming, as we all know, with Clarius Riverport and Freedom Industrial Park right there as well. So we continue to show those, and it's also landed Unified Resources was our, was a big announcement this year as well, that landed in the Hardyville Commerce Park. So through those partnerships, and with the county, and incentivizing those developers, it really does give us a lot of product to offer, and we've seen a lot of success with everything that's going on in 17 and throughout the county. This, we touched on North Point and Salt, but they committed to 6 million square feet and 550 jobs right there on the Sherwood Track, just right there in Hardyville as well.
And we still maintain 550 acres within the Sherwood Track that is designated for more heavy manufacturing. That was the original point of the Sherwood Track. The site was actually selected by a company before, that's how it came on the radar. Our company looked at it for its proximity to the port of Savannah, and we started doing due diligence on the property, getting auctioned on it. And ultimately, with the support of the Charleston port, we purchased the 500 acres that we own, the port of Charleston, actually purchased that property. So again, partnerships, they, that piece, that property from the entrance to the Savannah Port is 14-minute drive in traffic. They know nobody's ever going to drive a truck to Savannah, to Charleston, but they partnered with us to make that a logistics area and warehouse area. This is kind of where you're at all the time.
Yeah, yeah. So most of my time is spent, of course, a portion of it in Cypress Ridge, showing properties, but primarily in Jasper County, around the Highway 17 corridor. So this map, all the highlighted regions show the names of the parks as well. So there are millions of square feet going vertical. So going vertical in Jasper County, and we continue to submit these properties on RFIs and to continue to show them to manufacturers. And we spoke on, Project Sandman is going there at the Clarius Park, Hardyville. We expect a sign lease this, this month. So that's going to be 530 jobs and 134 investment.
So part of what we do, so we've talked about kind of the product and things to do, but what are we really doing from a marketing perspective? We're out, the Department of Commerce is for the state, the lead marketing room for the state. We are one of the eight regional alliances that they have set up that work under them. However, we don't wait on them to go and do their marketing. Palmetto Partners, our top line is the state's partnership, where they, again, some of the folks that you're going to have lunch with are Palmetto Partners, and so they're invited to those missions that the state does. Well, that's great, and we love going on those missions, but we also do our own marketing, and we're not going to wait on the state, because quite honestly, the state likes Charleston and Greenville a lot. So we continue to market face-to-face meetings, create strategic partnerships, and we go and face-to-face with companies. We are doing that, you know, not weekly, because Zoom has created our ability to now get in front of somebody in Poland without having to fly to Poland, and it makes it a lot better. But if we can find some company that is looking to relocate, and they're interested in the Southeast, we're going to try to see them, especially if they're in the U.S., get in front of them, show them what this region in Jasper County has to offer. And, you know, there's a lot of places we go that they don't want to be where they're at anymore. Trudeau changes in Canada, but a lot of people in Canada didn't want to be there. So we are always out trying to get people looking in this region that are in the mindset of either expanding or we, you know, Unified Resources is or closing a facility and relocated everything to here. So finding that out early, getting in front of those folks, just like every other state, but also other countries. I mean, we literally are competing on a global scale every time a project is, not every time, but quite often. Sitting in the car, sending emails, I said Poland, because I'm just sending emails to a company in Poland that's planning another trip back over here, a third trip. We're answering requests for information from site consultants that come. So there is a group of entities called site consultants that are listed on there. We keep in contact with them. The companies hire them, kind of think of them as a real estate agent for a company that's looking to make a major investment. Most of the time, the company doesn't come by themselves, they have a site consultant. And the site consultant's job is to tell them, no, you should not be there. That's their sole job, get rid of all the sites that have a problem. So that's why we work so hard to have infrastructure ready, have, you know, the incentives that the state offers are very competitive. South Carolina is one of the top states people want to relocate to. But we've got to be in front of those consultants, and they're bringing those folks here. So we're maintaining that relationship. They send RFIs, we answer them. Taylor sometimes has to answer 700 questions about the Sherwood Track or the Clarius Park on a routine basis, and they don't give us very long to do it. Sometimes I think it's a game for them, see how fast we can fill it out. But that's what we're doing on a daily basis, trying to meet with those companies, filling out requests, and getting the sites prepared. I was civil engineer, I've worked on large industrial projects before. I was in site selection, but not on industrial, I did site selection for commercial. So I understand what they're thinking, they're looking for, what is a risk? And if that risk is too high, and this other site doesn't have that risk, this other site's no better. So our job is to make sure we get every risk, we just try to reduce every risk. A lot of times, that costs money. So we're trying to pick out which risk can we reduce for the least amount of money for us, so that when that site consultant shows up, we can say, yep, we haven't done it, but we already have a plan, and we know how much it's going to cost. Things of that nature are what we do on a daily basis. We have a podcast, again, marketing to site consultants about what's going on in the area. We hope that y'all are looking at these, or interviews with us, with companies, with our chairman, Mr. Salz, on Monday. We're putting those together. They're out there, they're on our website, they're on YouTube. And we're on all the social media that I'm not necessarily all, but we're on, but we're on, so we encourage you to like and follow all of these, because these are, it's shared, and people see those. And we are about the partnership, the people and the prospect, but partnerships are important.
Taylor, you're our representative, right?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Happy to answer any questions.
Too much, not enough.
I have a question. So I see all the warehouses and everything, and it looks like y'all are a part of a lot of that, bringing in all that. So when does, not the quality of our roads, but when does the size and the amount of road systems become an issue for you as a seller point to bring in? Because all this stuff is there, I don't think it's all online, but it will be shortly. And I got a feeling, I don't know if X-Five is going to help, but I got a feeling we're all going to feel a lot more pain. And so when does it become a time when you are having a hard time selling?
We are tactical about when we show certain pieces of property, depending on what we want them. We're trying to make it look the best to them. I mean, it's somewhat real estate-wise. You don't, I mean, you've got to have a house near a railroad track, you don't show the client when the train's going by. So we think about things like that. But a lot of times, we don't have that opportunity. We had a project that came in two weeks ago, and they said, we're landing our plane, you pick us up at 9:00, and we're getting back on that plane at 11:00. And you've got that much window to show us everything you have to show us to convince us to come here. And they have since come back, so that first meeting worked. But the answer really is, when you get to be like Charleston. And I can say that because I'm from Charleston, I grew up in Charleston. See the traffic engineer, and I've known him for a long time. There is a point at which they start looking at that. Now, with all the data that's out there, they're looking at all the traffic counts, because it's the same thing I would do. They're looking at traffic counts, they're looking at congestion. They're pulling data from online, DOT's website. So when they come, they're trying to validate what they're seeing. You're not there yet, to say that.
That was my question.
You will be there at some point.
And then, and I know people are looking at this, but we want to do what we can, because we don't want you to have to say, you know, if we're going to keep growing, but there's only so much we can do.
Right. There's only so much that can be done. And the industries, you know, understand that certain things like turn lanes and things like that, that are specific to their product, they're going to end up having to pay for, or maybe that's part of the grant they get from the state.
Couple things. First of all, is it, what's the relationship? We're required by the state to form alliances, is that correct? Or something like that? Could you explain that?
The state set up the alliances, and then all the counties are to be in the alliance.
Right. And why is that?
From a regional perspective, they, they, part of it is like, we'll get an RFI, and it's then we distribute it to the counties. Now, in your case, we act as your county person. Some of the counties we represent have in-house staff, but we're filtering, not filtering, we're sending the information to them, to a certain extent, filtering. Beaufort doesn't have any rail accessible sites, so if the state sends us a rail project, there's not a point of sending it to Beaufort, there is no rail sites in Beaufort. But they're having us work at it, look at it, in conjunction with the counties.
Okay, so like Beaufort, we'll just go to Beaufort, they have a person that you work with?
Yes.
Why is the Sherwood Track, what's going on with the Sherwood Track? It seems so good, so, you know, just seems like a perfect place. And I think we had a meeting two years ago, where there's some land to be the greatest thing in the world, but there's just one thing that's going to stop it. Is that Sherwood Track? What's that one thing?
Well, the Sherwood Track at that point, it was the wetlands permit. We've since completed that. Again, removing that risk. There's a wetland permit in place that does minimal impacts, but allows the footprint that would, for a large industry to land.
So we're better off now than we were?
We moved that, yes. And we've, and waterline is under construction out there right now. Again, another checking, another, we're checking off boxes, finding grant money to do different things.
Would that affect my exit rate, though?
Exit three, it will help Sherwood, absolutely. And Sherwood, you know, we get calls from developers all the time wanting to purchase Sherwood, but that's not where, we're trying to create manufacturing jobs on Sherwood. You know, Riverport's filling up, Salt is just getting started, Clarius is working, so there's a lot of things. And so at least once a month, if not every other week, we get a call from somebody wanting to purchase the Sherwood Track.
For warehousing?
For warehousing.
Which is lower side of.
Yes.
We, in fact, we have very little manufacturing in this state, I mean, in this county.
Yes, that's what we're all about.
I mean, there's manufacturing, but not like 3,000 people, 2,000. I thank you. If no one else has questions. Fulmer, do you have any questions?
A quick clarification, you asked about being in an alliance. There's no requirement that you're in an alliance, that you're probably not going to get any help if you're not in an alliance. It's very similar to Locog. County can apply directly for a community development block grant, but they're not going to get it. They'd like you to go through Locog. So that's the preference of commerce, and so that's why we do it, and we have the resources of this fine group to do that. You mentioned the distinction that some counties contract for marketing only, and have their own economic development staff. Jasper County contracts for the marketing and the people, and that's worked very well for us.
The only reason I did that, I just wanted to show everybody the relationships that we have.
Yes, yeah. If I could, Mr. Arzillo's comment about transportation, if you look on the bright side of things, you're talking about a company moving into the southern end of the county. To think that you've got Route 17 widening, under construction, right? Someday, William, right? You've got the Back River Bridge, as we learned today, is the next project. You've got Exit Three funded and moving forward, right? And you've got a small pinch in front of Riverport that is still two lanes. And that is a project for your transportation sales tax project. I think you can show everyone, we're really moving fast and various, and the I-95 wide new project.
Those are all listed. When a company's here, we're talking to them, we're having it, we work all that in conversation. Either we're driving pie, saying, look at what's happening to improve this infrastructure, or during conversational parts, we're working all that in.
Those are a whole lot of funded projects.
There's a whole lot of funded projects, yes. And that's part of, you know, our discussions with the project.
And one more thing, Mr. Chairman and Council, talking about this, they gave you the example of Beaufort County. A developer comes in and says, we need a rail-ready site, and if Beaufort County doesn't have a rail-ready site, then one of the other six counties may have a rail-ready site, and then the developer can be steered to that particular site. So the idea is that if one of the other six counties can provide the amenity package that the developer's looking for, then a half a loaf is better than no loaf. The way it used to be, you had one economic development director for each county, and if that county didn't have natural gas available, or they didn't have three-phase electricity available, then you didn't get the development. So, but the way that is done here is that if another county in the seven-county collaborative has the amenity package available, then we actually get the development. And so the seven counties are close enough and close enough collectively involved that a worker can drive from one county to the other. And that's how we get the half a loaf instead of no loaf. And that's how we get the half a loaf instead of no loaf. Because if you don't have the amenity package, then the developer goes to Nebraska or some other place where they actually have the amenities available.
Usually not Nebraska.
I do have one question. One question, I'm new, so forgive me. How does the Southern Carolina Alliance get funded?
So, it's funded from multiple assets. So, some investors, and we do get some funding from the state, we do get some federal funding, and then we do get some funding from the county.
Okay. I think it's 140,000. That's.
150,000, I believe, is the correct number, I think.
Amen. What'd you say?
I think it might be 150,000, don't hold me to that, but.
Between 140, 140, 150, 148 maybe. I, I just thought. I was just curious, thank you.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? No questions? That's it. Now, just for, we have, the next one is working lunch. Are we prepared for that, for lunch, or?
Lunch will be here around 12 o'clock, it's being delivered.
Okay. Well, then, I'd like to take a 10-minute break. I think we've been here long enough. I am not a camel. Thank you.
I'd like to call a meeting back to order. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the lunch.
I'm sorry.
Pardon. Bless you next later on, so I get my medicine. Anyway, you're not going to call over there?
No. I may throw up at this. That's mine. Anyway.
Our next presenter is Alan Linkus and Sam Howell of Howell, Linkus, and Nettles. Mr. Nettles is missing, huh?
He is. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you all for having us. I'm Alan Linkus and my law partner, Sam Howell, and we work very much as a team on Ball County on matters of exams. Sam's going to make the initial presentation and I'll chime in if I can add anything.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon. I guess not what... Yeah, it's afternoon now. Y'all working pretty well. As Alan said, the two of us practice law in the area of municipal bonds or public finances, another term for it. You see half our firm here, Robert Nettles and John Griffin also work in these same areas, and the four of us have our office in Charleston. We've enjoyed working with Jasper County Government for some time now, and some of the projects that we've been involved with include this very building we're meeting in, and it's really gratifying in our practice of law to be able to see, you know, actual concrete and all the rise out of the ground to produce projects for them, for the people and for the government. My children got sick and tired of hearing me point out things like sewer plants on the side of the road when we were taking trips across the state saying, "Oh, I worked to help finance that thing." The feds told us that last time. Anyway, that's what we do, and the reason that you have to have a bond lawyer is that unlike really about any other kind of person or borrowing entity or organization to go borrow money, state and federal laws put strict, very strict restrictions on the ability of state and local governments to borrow money in general, and in particular because under certain circumstances, when a state or local government borrows money, the interest that it pays to pay debt service on that borrowing are exempt from federal income taxes. So the feds have a lot of restrictions to address that aspect of it, and each of the states have very strict restrictions on the ability of local governments to borrow money. So it's our job as a bond lawyer to fundamentally do two things: to prepare the legal papers necessary, the approvals required, and get the consents needed to satisfy the state law that the bonds can be legally issued, and we give an illegal opinion to that effect. And in most cases, not all are tax exempt, but most financings by state or local government are intended to be tax exempt, we give an illegal opinion that in fact the interest on the transaction is exempt from federal taxation. So that's the end product of what we do, those two things. Now, in the meantime, we work with your administration, other local officials elected and appointed, to put together all that's necessary in order that we can give those two opinions when you get to your closing. Municipal bond financing is a specialty, but it's not like most of the other specialties you may be familiar with that lawyers have. There's tax specialists, there's worker comp specialists, there are all sorts of specialists in the law. Those kinds of specialties are set up and governed by the state bar or the state or other comparable organization in other states, but the state, the South Carolina bar basically establishes those kinds of specialties and polices them, for lack of a better term. That's not the case with municipal bond lawyers. They're not even recognized as a specialty in South Carolina law, or I don't know that any other state law for that matter. Instead, the financiers of municipal projects, primarily investment bankers and commercial banks who are in the business of buying, trading, lending on municipal bonds, they police the industry of the specialty of municipal bond lawyers. It produced a book that the industry book that lists not only just bond traders and bond dealers, but there's a section on municipal bond lawyers. And the book, because of the color of its cover, is called The Red Book, and essentially only a red book approved municipal bond firm will have the acceptance of their opinion in the national bond market that state and local governments need in order to access that market to get financing, get long-term financing when necessary, to get tax exempt, lower interest rates when qualified. And so we have an important job to play because we've got to get Jasper County into that market in order to access the most favorable long-term and sometimes short-term financing that's available to state and local governments. So we give this legal opinion, but in fact we have to do a lot more work than just that. We're usually involved on the front end in consultations with, again, your staff, your consultants and others on what's being planned in terms of capital improvement or program that ultimately they're looking to use municipal tax-free municipal bonds to finance. And we will end up with, for example, this is a book of just the legal papers and approvals necessary to put the current financing in place for this building, and it consists of a number of resolutions of council, ordinances of council, all the backup to that, that you've got the minutes of the meetings that show that you gave in readings or adoption, you've got the many things that had to be filed and published, such as notices of public hearing, filings with the state when the county issues bonds, as well as documenting if it's intended to be tax exempt, like the financing for this building is, that you meet all the federal IRS requirements to in fact be tax exempt. And so you build a book like this based on the actions that county council and others in the county government take, and your consultants, and ultimately we produce a closing in which our opinion is rendered to make it eligible for the terms of financing. We've worked with the county on general obligation bonds, which are payable by property tax levying against all taxable property in the county. That's what this building is financed with. There have been installment purchase revenue bonds issued by the county for capital projects when that made the most sense. We've assisted the county with financing improvements at the Regentland Airport, the Cherokee Fire Station, District Station. We've helped assist the county attorney from time to time on matters he's working on where they will relate to, say, a potential bond issue in future, such as local options, transportation sales tax referendums that the county has held. We assist the county when it wants to engage in lease purchase financing for particularly like vehicles or equipment as opposed to using more long-term debt, which has a longer life than the asset itself does. So lease purchase can also be structured in a way with local banks, state banks, or other lenders to be tax exempt, so that the interest rate charged in the lease purchase arrangement is lower than the lender would have to charge otherwise. Getting work on an interesting project that you're aware of, the potential arena for USCB, and that's involving not only Jasper County but Beaufort County and perhaps even some other governmental entities. So when our expertise in the municipal finance can help a working group that's working on a project like that, then we're brought in by your staff to assist with that, with those measures as well. Alan, do you...
No, I think you've covered it well. I guess I would just ask what questions you all have, what specific they might want us to address.
Yes, if you have questions or want to elaborate.
Excuse me for a minute, but I'm new. How do you guys get paid on your fees hourly? How do you guys, how do we hire you as a county to do the work?
Yeah, very good question. So to serve as bond counsel on an actual borrowing, we generally quote a fee upfront as to what our legal fee will be, and the other participants, other professionals involved with it, such as financial advisors, such as bond trustee banks, paying agency banks, all those professionals will likewise quote fees, some of them just foreclosing, like when we're finished with, when we can close a deal, that's the end of our development of the transaction unless you get called but questions and things like that, and we don't charge anything for follow-up like that. Some of the professionals, like a bond trustees, will be in the deal for the entire term of the financing, so they will charge based on a, you know, whatever their published rate is annually, but our fee is, you know, one-time upfront fee that we quote upfront. When we do work, say, on the, like the recent sales tax referendum, that's done on an hourly basis.
Okay.
And there's some work that, you know, that's better suited for an hourly basis than just quoting a flat fee of, you know, that will, it's just hard to gauge what that would be.
I'll just say that typically when we charge a flat fee that's associated with the transaction, it's paid at closing, as you said, from the proceeds of the financing.
Okay.
Right, that's, and that's generally true for all the professionals and other advisors involved in a bond issue, so they're paid upfront at closing from the bond proceeds, so there's not a bill coming to the county's general fund, for example.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask just another question? Can I ask another question just to follow up on that?
Yes.
What is the percentage, normal percentage? I know it may vary, but what would you say a normal percentage would be for fees?
I would say 1% to 2% until you start getting up into really big numbers, then it would be less than that, it would be dropping off pretty much all of that.
So if we said that we had a million dollar bond, $10,000?
Yes. 10 to 15, you know, so then, you know, the lower end too...
I'm not old yet.
Yeah, I know, but the lower end too, it might be, it'll be a little bit higher as a percentage, like sort of, once you get to $5 million to $20 million, which is generally what we work with at the county and generally what you see in projects, you know, in South Carolina, that's probably where it is.
Anybody else have a question?
No, sir, y'all asked what I was going to ask.
Question?
Well, I have some more.
Okay.
When you do bonding, do you separate bonds, meaning let's say a $100 million bond, do you do 50 and 50 to fall under some regulation?
Well, there would be reasons to break a transaction up into maybe a couple of phases. I mean, now that does, it doesn't double your cost of issuance, but it does increase the cost of issuance by doing it that way, so there would be some good reasons to do it, but for example, there are certain federal tax laws that require that the money be spent, bond proceeds be spent within generally three years in order for it to be tax exempt. If this is an extra long construction period and you can't work it out some other way, then you might see it done in phases, or it might just be the nature of the project that, I mean, the county's only, you know, comfortable building phase one, and let's just see how this does, and if it takes off like gangbusters, then you go to phase two later, but if it's going to be a lot, but three years, if it's going to be more than three years, you will begin to look at perhaps breaking it up into a couple of financings.
If I may, I would add to that, those kinds of structuring decisions are typically made with the assistance of the county's independent registered municipal advisor, who is, we refer to as a financial advisor, who helps model different possible scenarios of phased financing, for example, to determine what makes the most sense financially when you consider all-in all the cost of issuance or all-in the cost of borrowing. You know, if you have to borrow $100 million right now, but you're not going to use $50 million of it until three years from now, then you've got to weigh the cost of negative arbitrage, which is you're paying more than you're going to be earning on that money while it's sitting waiting to be used, so those, but those modeling decisions are typically made by the county after consulting with its financial advisor.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
In follow-up, can y'all explain, he just used the term registered financial advisor, which is a term, or can you explain to them why that is and why we have to have one?
Yes, exactly. So the income tax treatment of interest is, as I mentioned earlier, is a big aspect of the bond issue, and getting that tax exemption greatly reduces the cost of interest for the entire term of the deal, but there are also securities law requirements as well. Now, if the county were to borrow money from a local, state, or national bank for that and structured more or less like a bank loan, but because it's for a county project, the interest rate's tax exempt, you don't necessarily need a municipal advisor, financial advisor for that transaction, at least not legally, but to get into the, where the interest rates are longest and lowest in the public finance market, there really is a requirement from the SEC that the state or local government have a registered municipal advisor, registered with the SEC to give them advice on finances in general and particularly on that deal as to how to structure it, negotiate on behalf of the county with the underwriters or banks or whomever are going to take down the bonds to provide the financing, so that's their role in the transaction, as well as, as Alan said, do the slicing and dicing of numbers and demonstrate to the county council and your administrative staff, you know, what's the best approach in terms of maturity and number of tranches of issued bonds, that sort of thing, all that kind of financial information.
Is zero, is zero, how do you handle, we, you were talking about individual, can you lump bonds together?
Yes.
I mean, so could we have an umbrella, and how would that work maybe with some restrictions on one bond or you would have to force yourself to do individual?
Well, that's a good question, and it can be done, and it is done often. We just completed a transaction working with Charleston Airport, and for some tax and other reasons, part of the transaction could be tax exempt, part could not be tax exempt because of the private use by the airlines, which would otherwise, otherwise spoils the tax exemption for that part. Yes, it's cut into pieces, into series, and also if your asset, part of it's a short-lived assets, more low-end of equipment than the others, a building, that would be another reason to consider having two tranches, two series, and again, you might very well market them to different investors, long-term investors versus, you know, short-term lenders.
And what is the savings on that?
Well, I mean, that just depends on, you know, the numbers in the deal, but your borrowing would be tied more closely to the useful life of assets, so you're not paying for an automobile well beyond its obsolescence, you know, whatever. On the other hand, you're not trying to, you know, not paying off a building that well before, you know, it's anything close to its useful life is over with. You know, there are also ways to, under certain circumstances, prepay in whole and part a bond, so yes, if you have a long-term asset that you, that just, you know, money became available and you just want to reduce, you know, the debt service costs to the county, you can make, you know, prepayments in whole and part of bonds, so that's, there's some flexibility there.
Are you penalized for prepayments?
If the, in the long-term bond... If the, in the long-term bond market, a general rule is you get much below 10 years, prepay it in the first 10 years or have the ability to prepay in the first 10 years, you start paying a penalty with slightly higher interest. So you've got to be real serious about wanting to do it. But again, your financial advisor can really run models for you, showing compared one to the others, how it would work.
Do you also counsel us on when bonds should be put in, changed? So you re-bond it or something like that? Is that, you're running your...
Well, we can, yeah, we would let the county know that you've got the legal ability to, at this time, or coming up in the next six months, to prepay the bonds that were issued safe for this building. And the financial advisor would do the analysis, the financial analysis, that's what's required, we're not, the SEC will let us do that. So financial, you know, Andy would contact, you know, a financial analysis, a financial advisor do the financial analysis of prepayment, and what it would be and what the savings could be to the county and that sort of thing, and, you know, show that to county council, so here's a possibility to potentially save money.
And I'll just pile on one thing. Because of the shape of the yield curve, so, you know, the amount of interest you pay for a one-year maturity tends to be lower than the amount for year 2 or year 3. So the yield curve is sloping upward typically in a normal interest rate environment. It does, it kind of moves up and down depending on economic circumstances, but the, sort of the baseline is a yield curve shaped like this. So let's say you have a 30-year bond that you've issued, and the interest rate kind of goes up like this. Well, at that 10-year period where your call protection typically burns off and then you have the ability to prepay, if you refund those bonds or refinance those bonds at that time, then what you do is you reset the yield curve again. So it almost always makes sense in a normal interest rate environment to take a serious look at doing a refunding transaction at the period of time when the call protection goes away. Because you can almost always achieve a pretty significant savings by refunding them at that time. But again, that's all advice that typically comes from the financial advisor. Usually, financial advisors kind of follow along as you get, as the county gets closer to having the opportunity to evaluate that, and then as Sam said, we tend to follow along as well.
And what are the, I'm sorry, but when you have Jasper County School District, what do we, what does the county have responsibility for? Or is that a separate entity?
That's a, that's a separate legal entity. They're responsible for their own bonds, they accept their separate tax levy for their own bonds, and administration of their bonds is their responsibility. Though I will mention that we, the county council years ago assisted the school system here with a very large financing, taking advantage of the power plant, and when it came online, the enormous amount of, it was paying fee in lieu of taxes, which large industries and facilities and that generally pay, that those fees can be used to back bonds, just like normal profit taxes are used to back bonds. Except that state law, for whatever reason, doesn't let school districts borrow against their fees in lieu of taxes. Only cities and counties can do that, that's not law. So we got an opinion from the Attorney General's Office that it would be a public purpose for Jasper County Government to issue bonds payable from the school districts only, only the school district's portion of the fee in lieu of taxes paid by that facility to build a new school. And the Attorney General agreed that was completely legal. And so in that case, Jasper County Government just really, just out of just, for the good of the whole community, so it would lower the cost to the school district for a school that they had proposed to build, went ahead and issued special source revenue bonds that were payable only though from the school district's share of those fee in lieu of tax payments.
So what you're saying is if we could do that again, if it benefits all the total, meaning if we have a project, I know you're going to come up with, you know the question.
Yes, yes, and I think that we tested it, and we're the first ones to do it in South Carolina, and there are other counties that are doing that now. And that debt, by the way, is paid off. I'll make that very quick.
That's right, it's paid off.
But it is a tool that you could use in the future.
Who makes that decision?
County Council.
But who makes the decision to bring it towards the county council?
Well, in the past case, it was just after the new campuses were built and the school districts were running short. Even though they had the referendum, they didn't produce enough money out of that to pay the total cost. And so I believe it was, at that point, it was like $7 million or something like that. That they were short. And so they didn't know how to finish the project, and they came before the county council and said, can you help us brainstorm? And so we said, sure. So we got the bond council of the county and the school district together, and they came up with that idea.
It's one of those areas that are very complicated on a council. I mean, I have, I guess I have questions that are probably dumb, but...
No dumb questions.
Yeah, well, you know, it's a long time ago that I went through school with this stuff. But can you, do you give us, when we do a bond, do you give us alternatives? Meaning, it may be a little, the percentage, do you go on percentage of cost to us when you present a bond? Meaning, if you have a longer bond, the percentage goes up from the bond. Short bond is down. So are you looking at the percentage or the total cost of that bond? How do you determine that?
Well, it depends a lot on the project and the county's needs, and we get the options, and there've been times when their recommendation has been devolved it, there've been times when they've said, you just go to the bank and get some local financing. So we go through those iterations and meet them up each time we have a project, but it's very hard to say until we know what the project is and the timeline for the project.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
And by the way, I mean, when we get calls and discussions and produce, you know, some response to Andy about questions like that, the county does not get a bill from us, okay? So we don't charge sort of general consultation or anything like that. Only if it turns into a financing, then, all right, then we can say, all right, then it's, all right, you will borrow X dollars, and this is kind of a bond issue, then our fee is this.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Sam, because I wanted to tell, his hourly billing is extremely light. In fact, I had a hard time finding it. Most of the work that they do for us is good guidance, and the arrangement is that they get paid upon issuance when we do debt. And that works for us, because it allows us to tap into their knowledge over and over and different test things. If it doesn't go forward, doesn't get financed, we don't have any money out.
Are you the, excuse me, you bring up other questions. Are you a bond counsel for the school?
No, no.
So it's going to be, it's up to us to know what the bonding is and see if we can...
Yeah, as far as the school district is concerned, that's correct. I, we have no contact.
Let's say you were, could you actually tell them that we're bonding also, maybe we should put it together? Or is that, is that unethical?
No, that's not unethical, I, you know, just, they'll take my call.
Okay. I'm just...
No, it's a great idea. We can brainstorm about that, those things as they have capital needs to, it never hurts.
Right.
Mr. Kemp, I was going to suggest you talked a little bit about refinancings and refunding, Alan did, but you have a potential defeasance of debt that's coming up for an action item this week for them. I was thinking we might take advantage of Sam and Alan being here to give you a little briefing on that. And then number two, you had inquired a little bit before about St. Peter's Parish, and about what that is and how that works, and I think it'd be appropriate, since they were the creators of it, to give you a quick overview of that as well.
That's what we are here for.
Okay. Now, do you want to change voices if nothing else?
Sure. Well, on the subject of the action item this week, what's before council is a resolution to approve the defeasance of the remaining outstanding Series 2021 general obligation refunding bonds. And so the county has funds on hand that it can purchase investments, they call it slugs, which are state and local government series investments that are issued by the federal government. But using those investments, the county can defees, or in other words, set the money aside that upon the maturity of those investments along with the yield earned on those investments over the life, it will totally pay for the remaining amount of outstanding 2021 GO refunding bonds. And by doing that, using the funds that the county has on hand, I believe the financial advisor who has been modeling the savings, I think he's showing somewhere around 18 or 20% of savings on those bonds. So they will, by defeating them, the county will achieve that level of savings above what it would have ultimately paid on bonds, and they will go away in terms of no longer being a legal obligation of the county. Instead, it will be paid solely from those escrow funds that are set aside. And what that will do, I believe the remaining outstanding amount of those bonds is $4,825,000, somewhere around there, and that will free up that amount of general obligation debt capacity that the county will have to issue additional bonds in the future.
Question for you.
That's the defeasance, aren't there?
Questions? What is defeat, why do you use the word defeasance? I looked it up, I didn't really realize what that was. The definition is null and void.
Don't feel bad, the spell check doesn't know what it is either. It's in Black's Law Dictionary, but it just, it means legally no longer financially required to pay.
Right. Webster says null and void.
That works too.
Why don't you put null and void, or something like that? Just to, anyway, that's all I have, sorry.
Not at all. If there are no other questions about the defeasance, the St. Peter's Parish Jasper County Public Facilities Corporation is an entity that the county set up and has used from time to time to do certain financings on its behalf. It is a South Carolina nonprofit corporation. It's established for the purposes of promoting the development of Jasper County. Under federal tax law, it's known as a 6320 corporation, and that's based on a tax regulation. But because it qualifies as a 6320 corporation, it is considered an alter ego of Jasper County Government. That entity can be used to do tax-exempt financings that do not apply against the county's general obligation debt capacity. So it's a fairly complicated legal structure, but it works very well when there are projects that need to be done, but the county does not wish to use its GO debt capacity for that purpose. And it's broadly organized as basically a support entity for projects that will promote Jasper County and its economic, not just economic, but its government endeavors.
What is the, excuse me, any questions on that?
And that just allows us to get more, more in other things if we couldn't do other Jasper County entities?
Yeah, you know, initially, that entity was first used when the county had more projects than it could figure out how to finance, basically. And that was the historic courthouse renovation and the construction of this building. And the county was comfortable that it had the funding to do what it needed to do, but it didn't necessarily have the legal capacity, it didn't have a GO legal capacity to do what it needed to do. So that was a vehicle that could be used that was accepted by the markets, and those bonds were, you know, sold by Oppenheimer Co. and in, you know, a public bond offering, and the market was very receptive, and most of those bonds have been repaid at this stage or well into repayment. So it worked very well as a legal structure that could help the county get to where it is today.
Is it still relevant today?
It is relevant, yeah, it hasn't been.
We need to, we need to put something on that board, don't we?
Yes, sir, you do, and it's good that you're here to talk about that, too. We have a vacancy on the St. Peter's Parish Board, and Alan, does that matter?
Right, the board consists of, supposed to consist of three members. The county administrator is a de facto member of that board, but the other two members of the board have to be non-county employees, people not under the control of county council, basically. So the board is meant to be self-perpetuating, and, but a suggestion of, you know, one or more people who would be good members who are community-minded, that the council has a suggestion for, could be presented to the board, and then the board then has to actually vote whether or not to authorize the individual as a new board member. So that would be Andy and the remaining non-county board member would take a vote as to who, yes, up or down on appointing that new member. But yes, at this time, it does need a third.
Who is currently on there besides Andy?
Danny Henderson.
I think the idea, the exception was to try to get somebody who may be a banker and somebody who may be a lawyer, and so we had Danny on there. We had Cherie Darian, who was formerly with Regions Bank at the time.
The idea of being, you know, community-minded individuals who have those skill sets and, you know, willing to assist the county in its endeavors.
So do you need a letter, do we need a letter from you to request that? Or can we just do it? I'm just...
The board itself has to appoint them. We'd like it, at least somebody that obviously that you would like. So if you all want to get together amongst yourselves and find someone that you think is appropriate, I think you can just tell us, and we can take it from there.
What do you think we should know? Other than that, what else do you think we should know? What would you like us to question on when you do a bond?
Well, I will say this. I remember a couple of years ago when we brought some transactions before council, and Mr. Kemp, you were very inquisitive, and I appreciate that, because Sam and I talk about this all the time. If you go to county council meeting and there's a squad car, the decision about whether or not to purchase a squad car, you might get an hour of conversation about this or that, because everybody's purchased a vehicle at some point in their life, and they've all got questions or ideas. It's not unusual to show up, to present the $100 million bond issue and not get a question. And from our perspective, and that's natural, because a lot of people just don't know what questions maybe they need to be asking. But I appreciate the workout in county session, county council session, because it helps me understand what the issues are that the council is concerned about, and it helps me in my job make sure I'm addressing all the things that council wants to see addressed. So I appreciate that, and I was sitting here and I was thinking about, when you asked a few minutes ago about combining multiple bond issues, and as I recall, that was a topic of conversation at that meeting. And I think my advice was, there was a problem in doing that in the way the bonds were going to be marketed, because they were going to be repaid from two different refunding sources. One was a GEO credit and one was a revenue bond. And it's hard to combine those into a single offering. Most of the time, at least was, I think, on that occasion. So I appreciate the opportunity that I had to explain that to you, because I know one, you know, one of the key considerations is always, how much is this going to cost us? And why are the fees whatever they are? And, you know, I don't mind being tested on that, because we feel very strongly that we charge fair and competitive fees. And so whatever questions council has on that, I, you know, I might turn red in the face answering it, but I'm not afraid to answer it, to put it that way.
Any other questions? I just have one, the last one. Last, William. Do you have a PowerPoint or something like that explaining bonds? You know, we go to the Association of Accountants, and they always have these. I think I have one on bonding I can dig out.
Sure, we could find something.
Or explanation, we can go to better understand bonds that we can read.
Sure.
At least I can read.
I can, we can put together some resources.
Because I think we have to be more attuned to what we give the options.
Yeah.
We don't, you know, you come to the options, just tell us what the option was, why you didn't do that versus this, rather than just saying, here it is.
Understood.
So.
And in fairness, those conversations, a lot of those conversations are had before it gets to county council. And, you know, we probably need to be more mindful about sharing what all went into preparing the recommendation or preparing the legal work before it gets to you, because, you know, obviously, you know, part of all those iterations.
Not too deep in the woods, but just enough.
I understand.
To see the woods.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Parker Poe is consulting here. Azad Khan.
Good afternoon. How are you all doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing great. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for having me. My name is Azad Khan. I'm a consultant with Parker Poe Consulting. Can you hear me okay? I'm not sure if this is.
Yeah.
Okay. Parker Poe Consulting is a boutique consulting practice based, based in Columbia, South Carolina. We are wholly owned by Parker Poe, Adam Bernstein, a large regional law firm in the Carolinas and Georgia. The consulting practice includes four consultants. Three of us are based in Columbia, South Carolina, and one of us is in Charlotte. We help companies and governments with site selection, economic development, incentive negotiation, and incentives compliance. I started my career working for the South Carolina Department of Commerce as a research analyst. The Department of Commerce is a state agency tasked with recruiting companies all across South Carolina. So I worked in research there, and then I worked for a regional economic development group. I think I saw on your agenda that Southern Carolina Alliance was on the agenda at some point today. And so I worked for a like-type organization in the Midlands. And then about 11 years ago, I joined the consulting group to offer incentive work, incentive services across the state. So on the first bullet item here on the list you see is incentive compliance. That is where I spend the majority of my time. What we do is we help governments monitor performance of companies that have made commitments to those governments, whether it be to make capital investment or create jobs. We help ensure that those companies are on track to meet those obligations and also help to ensure that governments are meeting the obligations the governments made under those agreements to. Those agreements are, tend to be incentive agreements, like the fee in lieu of tax incentive. Sometimes there are infrastructure credit agreement incentives, which I'll talk a little bit more about a little bit later on in this presentation. I also advise on G A S B 77. So I mentioned a moment ago the fee in lieu of tax, which is an incentive that carries enter into with companies to abate taxes. G A S B 77, G A S B stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It's the equivalent of GAAP, right? They set guidelines for counties to achieve certain certifications for its financial reporting. In 2015, they issued a new rule requiring governments to disclose the value of tax payments as part of their financial statements. I think their abbreviation for the financial statements is A C F R. And Kim may have to help me with what that stands for, but it's essentially your income statement, balance sheet, and the notes to those financial statements. So in those notes, the county has to tell the public, we abated this much in tax money. Here are some of the stipulations that allow us to collect those tax monies. If the company doesn't meet those performance obligations, it takes of that nature. And so I help Jasper County ensure that it abides by its G A S B 77 disclosure requirements. As part of G A S B 77, the primary government also has to disclose to the affected governments, such as towns, cities, school districts, the value of the tax payments that they entered into on behalf of the affected governments. So part of our G A S B work is to also prepare memos that go to those affected governments so they understand what was abated during the past tax year. The third bullet there on the list you see is a fee in lieu of tax modeling and budgeting. So the fee in lieu of tax incentive can be relatively complex. I'll talk a little bit more about the moving parts of a fee in lieu of tax incentive. But what we do is we help counties and governments understand what those revenues might be under various fee in lieu of tax incentive structures. I mentioned there's many ways to quote-unquote skin the cat. And so given the terms that are entered into between companies and governments, I help model what that revenue might be over time. There's another component of the fee in lieu of tax incentive called a multi-county industrial park, which I'll talk a little bit more about later on. But that's also included in how we model those revenues to. Fee in lieu of tax budgeting. So as you may have gathered by now, there's this little bucket of revenue under the, for fee in lieu of taxpayers. Every year, I assist with providing numbers as part of the budgeting process so that you guys can understand, okay, out of the fee in lieu of tax money, this is what we can expect to get in the upcoming fiscal year. The fourth bullet there, fiscal and economic impact modeling. You know, when companies are entering into incentive agreements with counties, they're asking for tax payments. Governments still have to provide public services for all the new jobs and for the business that's, you know, locating in that jurisdiction. And so as part of our fiscal and economic impact modeling, we help governments understand if they are entering into these incentives and abating taxes, are we still collecting enough revenue to cover our costs to provide public services? So we develop tools that are now licensed across the state. I think we've got over half the counties in the state that license those tools from us. And so a lot of my time is spent on those tools as well. The last bullet there, you see other services. Given my background in economic development, we spend a lot of time on all areas of economic development. I have colleagues that also advise on, let's say, organizational structuring for economic development organizations. On the slides that Sam had a moment ago, he talked a little bit about the industrial parks that you guys have. I helped to prepare analysis to show, okay, if we enter into a multi-county industrial park, what are the revenues that might go into that park if we, you know, if we put these various properties in that park? So there's a few other things that we also help with. Okay, so what are incentives? You heard me say now a few times the fee in lieu of tax agreement. You may hear me say fee. You may hear people say fee low. It is a tool that was enabled by state government in the late 80s. And at a high level, what we like to say is that it's an incentive that provides a minimum of 42% savings over the term of the agreement. That 42% is true for manufacturing. It's not true for warehousing distribution. Part of the savings comes from locking in the tax rate at today's number. So the tax rate today, under a fee in lieu of tax incentive, will be the same for the entire term of that incentive. It can be a 20-year term, 30-year term, 40-year term. The fee locks that tax rate in for the term. It also allows companies to lock in the value of their real property. So if they build a new building, let's say it costs them $50 million to build a new building, that value is logged in, I think $20 million for the entire term. It's not subject to reappraisal or reassessment every five years. Now, that's a little bit of a double-edged sword, because sometimes if companies are not maintaining their properties, it might devalue over time. And so, you know, under the fee, they might be paying more than they would if they were outside the fee and able to get appraised at maybe lower value.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Could I ask, have the council, they have any questions on each item of it one?
Yes.
So we don't go back and.
Yeah, of course.
Does anyone have any questions about fee in lieu of taxes?
Do you have a quick question as you do that, as it pertains to school districts and municipalities and things that are all working together with the county? How do you fare and able to pull that N C I P come up with those distributions of percentages?
Sure. So that's a, it's a discussion that takes place on the front end typically. I know that in Jasper County, a lot of multi-county industrial parks are established with different incentive agreements. There's conversations I know that Andy has with leadership at the school district and with the towns to establish a sharing of those revenues. And those, the mechanism or the amounts that are shared are established in the multi-county industrial park or the ordinance that accompanies that industrial park. And so a lot of my work on the compliance side is to ensure that when the bills are sent, they are sent with those amounts baked into it. Does that answer your question?
Anybody else?
Yes. So the G A S B 77 was one of those provided by county last year?
Yes, sir. It's all part of your A C F R, and they'll be going through the A C F R tomorrow.
Okay, yeah. So you'll see the A C F R is a very long financial statement.
Annual Comprehensive Financial.
Thank you. Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And there is one note that the G A S B 77 tax payment note that I helped with, and it's maybe a page and a half long. And as part of that disclosure, we say for the fee in lieu of tax incentive, this is the amount that was baked in. That's the requirement. And we'll also, there's another incentive called the special source revenue credit. It's sometimes tacked on to the fee low as a way to further incentivize the company to locate. So the G A S B 77 disclosure includes a paragraph or two about the fee, paragraph two about the special source revenue credit, and a paragraph or two about the multi-county industrial park.
And I know I'm going to say this wrong, but it'll show what we're not collecting had we not made those agreements.
Correct.
Of that.
That's correct. Now, what we do, too, is to kind of portray a fair picture. We also like to say, here is what the county did receive, right? Because had we not entered into this agreement, we might not have gotten any revenue, right?
Absolutely not. That's why I said maybe wording wrong. But my point was, to give us an idea of what percentage of our tax base is being traded off for the future.
That's right. Yeah, there's a, it kind of depends on your frame of thought on this. You know, some people think that, well, you're giving away all the money. In some cases, you know, half a pig is better than no pig, right? So we like, it's not required to disclose in the notes what you received, but we like to put a line on there and say, if we want to include that, we can. Okay, so.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Yeah, I can, I'll pause at the end of each slide. I've only got like five slides. Going back to the fee in lieu of tax incentive here you see on the screen, the last bullet point, which says it can include additional tax reductions. I alluded to that a moment ago when I mentioned the special stores revenue credit. That's abbreviated S S R C. Sometimes it's called infrastructure credit. And really, all it is, is an additional percentage discount off of the fee in lieu of tax incentive. So let's say a company and a county enter into a fee agreement and agree to the 42% savings, right, over, let's say, 20 years. The company may say, well, we're going to create more jobs, we're going to make more investment, we want more savings. So there may be some negotiation, and the county may say, okay, well, we'll offer an additional 10% reduction. That additional 10% is the special source revenue credit. And so that is sometimes part of the fee agreements. Sometimes it's a totally separate agreement. And so part of our work is to help ensure that those are applied correctly.
Can I just have one question? I'm feeling, we talked about percentage and all that. Do you ever look at total package? I think Parker Poe, at one time, we, two years ago, three years ago, we had a meeting with them, and they explained that everybody looks at one number, the bottom number.
Yeah.
That's it, right? You can do anything else up above, but that bottom line is it. Do we ever look at that to say, okay, fee in lieu of taxes, maybe we don't need that, but we can have the savings someplace else to make that number?
Yeah, it's very much a dynamic process where, you're right, everyone looks at the bottom number. Usually it's the net present value. They want to know, what is the net present value of this stream? Because the terms can go 20, 30 years. So they want to know, what is that today? And so that's the bottom line number of the net present value. Sometimes we, you know, as part of agreeing to provide the same net present value, the credits may be structured differently. Maybe they're front-loaded, maybe they're back-loaded. You know, there's a lot of flexibility in what those credits are and how they are applied over time to make sure we get the same net present value at the end of the day, or to enhance it or reduce it as we need to.
Thank you.
So I mentioned a little bit about the multi-county industrial park. Almost every fee in lieu taxpayer is located in a multi-county industrial park. They are not always physical geographies. They don't have to be, you know, an actual industrial park you drive into where you see a bunch of industrial buildings. They can be, really, any company that locates, we can establish it as a multi-county industrial park. The company will be located in that multi-county industrial park, and it allows the government to change the way the payments are allocated internal to that county. So instead of allocating the money according to mileage, which is whatever, how the rest of the property tax monies are shared, the county can say, okay, well, let's allocate, you know, 25% to this, 30% to that, however, you know, the best manage those funds. So it allows flexibility to reimburse the county for expenditures towards economic development, to establish funds to encourage more economic development. It provides more flexibility. It also encourages regionalism and cooperation, because these agreements are done with partner counties. Jasper County is a primary partner county. It's Hampton County. There are a few multi-county industrial parks with Beaufort County as well. And essentially, Beaufort County shares 1% of their fee revenues with Jasper County and vice versa. Anyone have questions about multi-county industrial parks?
I know this is going to be, excuse me, does anybody have a question?
The fee in lieu, what is the typical length that we're talking, 30, 50 years, 20? What's the average?
I would say the average is 30 years. Depending on the size of the investment, though, they can go up to 40 years. And it allows companies to capture, or allow a company to make investments under that agreement for up to 15 years on the biggest term. And so it's really 65 years, right? If you have 15 years to make investments, that 15th year of investment can go for 40 years. So that's 65 years from the first year. So.
So you could legally stretch out 65 years?
At most, yes. That's the most, yeah. And those are very rare, though. Those are for very, very large projects. But the average, I would say, is between 20 and 30 years.
I know there's a question I should know. And I think I've know it, but multi-county industrial park. We give 1% to Beaufort, or Hampton, whichever.
Yes.
Why do we do that? Why do we need it? And I know it's a reason, but explain it to people, so.
Statutory required.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Very simple.
Yep. You have, in order to enter into a multi-county industrial park, you have to have a partner county. You have to share something with that partner.
No, no. Why do we even have it? Why do we have to share it with another county?
Oh, it's, yeah, like I said, it's statutory.
It's required.
It's required by law.
In order to have an N C I P, you have to share at least something, right?
I understand that, but if we didn't have the park, we wouldn't have to share it.
Yeah, well.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I got you, yeah. If you didn't have the park, then you wouldn't be able to establish funds and handle those monies separately than the way compared to how you handle normal property tax.
That's what I thought, but I just want to make it clear. This is not just for me.
Also, there are other benefits that the business gets by being in a park.
That's right, yes.
They give job training credits and so forth that assist the business. It doesn't have much to do with us.
That's right. That's a good point, Andy. So companies also benefit from being in a multi-county industrial park. There are state income tax credits. Andy mentioned one of them was the job tax credit. If a company is located in a multi-county industrial park, they get an additional $1,000 income tax benefit per job.
So it's just not because we do it, it's because of reasons.
Yes, that's right.
That's.
Does the fee low travel with the business, or does it go with the parcel, so?
Yeah, so it stays with the parcel. The real property is specific to the parcel. If a company were to expand within the county, I've seen where the agreements have been modified to include additional parcels. If the company takes equipment that's under that agreement and moves it out of state, then they don't, then it's out of the fee agreement. The fee agreement's still in place, that location.
That's it?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so you may ask, well. Okay, so you may ask, well, why are we doing incentive agreements? You know, why don't we just let companies locate here? Well, the, the main reason is because in South Carolina, property taxes, especially for manufacturers, are extraordinarily high compared to our neighboring states. So compared to Georgia and North Carolina, manufacturing property taxes are between sixty-five and seventy-five percent higher. And so it makes South Carolina not competitive when it comes to property taxes. And so the fee in lieu of tax incentive is a way for counties to negotiate with companies to become on a more level playing field with our neighbors so that we can be more competitive with neighboring states. You know, homeowners in South Carolina pay a lot less relative to businesses in South Carolina. And so that's part of why the tax rate, the property tax rate for businesses in South Carolina is higher. So I'll talk a little bit about some of Jasper County's existing fee payments or fee in lieu taxpayers and new ones. So at present, there are twelve distinct fee payers. Those companies are actively making investments, they are actively creating jobs. These companies have invested almost nine hundred million dollars through the end of twenty twenty-three. We'll know more about the end of twenty twenty-four by this spring when these companies are making their property tax filings. The county has four utility scale solar farms in the county. That, that's been a trend in the last, let's say, ten years where there's a lot more utility scale solar farm development in our state. And those utilities are taxed at the highest rate as well, like manufacturers. And so a lot of these solar farms are asking for property tax payments to get on a more level playing field. In total, these fee payers make payments of about five million dollars this last tax year, which is up from about four million dollars previous year. There are several agreements that have just been entered into where the companies have not yet placed property in service. And so those monies have not yet been collected. But those companies have committed to invest upwards of six hundred and fifty-five million dollars over their investment term. And so, you know, if that comes to light, that means that the county can expect to receive an additional almost nine point five million dollars in fee in lieu of tax revenue. Now, again, that's after these companies have made their investments and are paying under the agreements. Anyone have questions about this slide?
Any questions?
Yes, that's, yes, that's a great question. So this is the total amount, right? That's not the amount that goes to Jasper County for operating or debt. It's the amount that the companies are paying in total. And so it still gets shared across the different taxing entities.
And this is also just Jasper County does this, not, it could be Hardyville, it could be Ridgeland.
Well, no.
Where the, where the people that do the file?
That's right, yes.
It's really, it could be any place in Jasper County.
Correct.
In the municipalities or?
That's correct, it could be anywhere, that's right. So on this slide, I've shown a list of the companies, the twelve distinct taxpayers that are currently paying under a fee in lieu agreement. You can see the amount at the bottom of five point oh four million, which is the same from the previous slide. This number changes gradually, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down over time. If there are no, all else equal, right, if the company makes no more investments, this number gradually goes down because of appreciation of personal property. But because these companies have also made investments or commitments to make more investments, you know, typically it goes up over time. Anyone got questions about this slide?
Speedway Property, is that just different?
It's a, yeah, a real estate developer, and so they develop multiple properties, they put each property under its own LLC.
Thank you. Any questions?
So you'll hear from, some of my colleagues haven't arrived yet, Ray and Ryan Romano with Parker Poe Law Firm. They're on the agenda a little later on. They'll probably go in a little more detail about the fee in lieu tax incentive and the other multi-county industrial park that we talked about a while ago.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Andy, you have any questions?
No, sir. Vice chairman asked questions about filos and the percentages paid in different jurisdictions. And I think that, as Azad said, his colleagues with Parker Poe Law Firm will be able to explain what we did. We entered into an economic development agreement with the city of Hardyville that lays all that out, and they'll be able to review that for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Bragg. Bragg Consulting Corporation.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. So I am Jennifer Bragg. I started J Bragg Consulting in January of twenty eighteen. So with me, we're a smaller firm, but we are a firm of experienced senior engineers. So I've got thirty-plus years in the industry. Most of my time has been more on the transportation side, either doing actual roadway design, preparing roadway plans through project management into program management. I've actually been on multiple, multiple different sales tax programs and also S C D O T's twenty-seven and seven construction resource and management program that was early two thousands, where they were trying to accomplish twenty-seven years of roadway projects in seven years. With me is Mike Benz. Mike actually retired from S C D O T. He's got forty years of experience. His background has been with D O T on the program management side. He was one of S C D O T's first program managers. He also served as resident maintenance engineer for a little while, utilities engineer. He was their expert witness for right-of-way acquisitions if they went into combination. Since leading D O T, he's been basically doing similar items on the side. Scott Hildebrand and Joey Woody both have twenty-six years of experience. Scott's done a little bit of everything from roadway design to stormwater to civil site. He's done a little bit of construction management, you name it, well-versed in all of that. Joey's background is more civil site with stormwater. Both Scott and Joey have actually been working on stormwater master plans with the town of Bluffton. Derek's been with, in the industry for about five years, but she's got eighteen years of experience. A lot of her background was actually in print media prior to coming to working with us. And then the reason why I've got partnering with Ron Joy, I'm sure most of you've seen him at various county council meetings. He teams with us quite frequently and helps out on a lot of items, including a few of the things here with Jasper County. So these are some various things that I mentioned we've done and can do. We are located here in Low Country Headquarters, it's in Bluffton. So this is showing the relationship here with Jasper County. But these are just various items that we can do in-house. So one of the first projects that I started working on with Jasper County was when there was discussion of doing impact fees. So part of what we did was, well, me in particular, was helping prepare a list of projects and coming up with the overall budgets. So this actually started in, I want to say I got involved in June? No. Well, sometime in twenty twenty-one, I prepared an initial document in October of twenty twenty-one. That was the start of the coordination between Jasper County back with both municipalities. And over the next couple of years, it was fine-tuning the list, rearranging, shifting priorities, putting projects on, taking some projects off to get to the current list we see here. And this information was then relayed to the other consultant the county had, which was Carson, I always say it wrong.
Spice.
Spice. Oh, I was gonna say it differently. Where he actually pulled together the numbers that went into that impact fee of what it would take to do the projects. But these were the overall budgets. These budgets included the management, the design of the projects, the right-of-way acquisition and utility coordination, the construction, the construction management and CE and I. So from this list, again, this was given to the county and both municipalities. And this list was actually used, which is why you see similar projects that are now in your sales tax. So that's kind of how some of those projects got on the sales tax. Another project that we've been involved with was Knolls Island Road on four sixty-two. So the way this started was a citizen sent in a letter asking for improvements to be done at this intersection. And the four comments that were made were clearing, buy an additional right-of-way and clearing that, so site distance from the intersection, turn lanes, and then potentially a caution like, like the one you see at three thirty-six on four sixty-two, right there, the Coopers store intersection. So what I did was I looked, the initial was looking at an intersection review, is there really a problem? And I pulled together reports, so there is a site distance problem. So coming out of the report, it was recommended the county should consider acquiring additional right-of-way and clearing that. The other was if funds were available, another safety improvement would be adding turn lanes on four sixty-two, because we all know people speed. If you don't speed, typically you get run over. And that's just a fact. After we did the intersection review, we had got asked if we could do some additional conceptual design. So what I did was I pulled together a cost proposal, it was submitted. The county chose to pursue C T C funding to assist with this initial work. C T C agreed to it in February of twenty twenty-four. So then we looked at a couple of other items. One was the actual cost estimate to truly clear the right-of-way by additional right-of-way and clear. So this is Knolls Island Road on four sixty-two, it is in a horizontal curve. So the inside of the curve is where the issue is. There is a sliver of land between D O T's right-of-way and the utility usement. And if a good portion of that or all of that was acquired, so you can basically end up with a clear space for a certain distance each side of the intersection, the site distance is improved. So part of that was we ran the numbers for limited design. What I mean by that is pulling together script map plans, the area that was needed for the right-of-way, looking at the, what potentially could be the right-of-way acquisition cost. There were no utility relocations under this, and just the construction to clear the right-of-way, state the new right-of-way as part of it, because D O T does require a right-of-way plat, also seating that wants this done and any other land disturbance permitting. That's roughly about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this. So the other option was looking at a true intersection improvement. So we went ahead and just costed out the highest one, which would be adding a dedicated right turn lane and adding a dedicated left turn lane and the other associated improvements. It still requires right-of-way acquisition. There are some utility relocations out here, because we did some limited coordination with utilities just to see what it may be. Scott helped with both of these. There are several utilities out here that actually do have what's referred to as prior rights, meaning they were there first or they sit slightly off of D O T's right-of-way, so they are not there by encouragement. So if you touch them, you have to pay for them to relocate. So we put in numbers for utility relocation, obviously the right-of-way acquisition, full design permitting, CE and I, and the construction. This is about a six point six million dollar project to go from point A to point B. This also would include more detailed study of the intersection, because right now, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I have not done a true traffic analysis. Doesn't necessarily warrant a full or all of this, maybe, maybe not. But adding a left turn lane when someone is sitting there waiting to turn left when they're sitting in the through lane and you witness driving down the road that somebody is slamming on brakes and you see the skid marks, it has a significant safety benefit. But that's to go from, like I said, all-inclusive from the beginning to the end. So we've looked at that, right now, the project is just holding. We need to get, I met with both Andy and Jim, brought them up to speed on the project. So we just need to find out next steps if the C T C is interested in funding either project, and then from there, it'd be back to the county. The town of Ridgeland was also involved with this, there have been significant accidents here. So with the tap grant, they planned non-motorized improvements. So as you're leaving the town of Ridgeland, the sidewalk stops before you ever get to this intersection. So we looked at including bike and pedestrian accommodations with this. Unfortunately, the county was the applicant, the town was a supporter of the projects, they really wanted it. D O T ruled that, well, we don't build two-lane roundabouts. We found that out a little bit too late and even called the District Six Traffic Engineer, who in turn sent a letter back to the deciding members at headquarters for D O T that made that decision that they were wrong. But a little too late, we have not resubmitted that application. A few other things, and this is some of where Ron Joy has come in and helped, because he retired from D O T with thirty-two years, basically second in charge. Still knows everybody, still maintains a good relationship. But we've looked into some other things and offered guidance on road ownership. Pine Haven Lane is one that has come before the county about who owns it and who can pay to repave it. And what D O T noted was, well, it's not ours, we have it in our system, it's local. But yet the county did not have records of official ownership. So we laid out the process of how to do that so that the road could be paved. Medical Center Drive was something similar where a portion of it's owned by D O T, who owns the rest of it, trying to solve that. And then the New River Landing was boat landing, trying to figure out where was the long-term maintenance agreement, because the county has been maintaining that. So that's a little bit of what we do. So any questions?
You were instrumental on the referendum, correct? You did all the roads and estimates, correct?
Well, I did the estimates that were on that impact fee list, and those got pulled forward. Some were tweaked based upon the decisions at the working session you had. The only one that was independent of that list was Lee Roads. I've prepared that one entirely separate, this on your sales tax list.
I'd be interested, what did you think of the first meeting?
I thought you had a good meeting, it's a good start.
You think I should have put more, more than four?
No, I think that's good. I mean, whenever you decide to truly move forward and here the county selects to assist with the program, can help further refine, because there could be a way of, back to what your discussions were with the bond attorney, because you do have the option to bond, how you want to lay the program out, whoever's on board can help with that.
No, sir. What did you think of the question or how we did the, the roads? How many, what priority was on the roads? I, I was very amazed that we were looking at it wrong with priorities. You know, what's the priority? Do we want it being built or do we want to be processing it to be built? And both are different.
Right, and I think you need a combination of the two.
Right.
I think some of the one, like everybody kept mentioning, Argen. Argen probably should be a top priority, it should use this to cut through between one seventy and two seventy-eight, but it's gonna take a lot longer to get it done. Whereas some of your intersection projects may take the same items, scope items, to do them, they potentially should be a shorter timeframe. So you could pretend, you know, depend, depend, that's where I brought up the part about the right-of-way acquisition. Right-of-way acquisition at a minimum typically takes about six months regardless. That's because the day you start, you're gonna get a title opinion to make sure you're talking to the right person, your appraisal, review appraisals, and you're negotiating. You're somewhere in that four to six months at a minimum. And that could be for a one-track or five tracks. You start getting more than that, your timeline even on that is going to go up. So Argen, when we looked at that one. So Argent, when we looked at that one, I can't remember the exact right of way, it's either 33 or 37 and a half from the center line. So 66, 75 feet width, the whole way. You're buying right of way that entire quarter. Even, even when you get to the design and you start that process, it's going to take a while on that. So you could start an intersection in that and the intersection could go within a couple of years potentially where Argent may take a little bit longer.
And the reason I bring it up is I'm trying to avoid what you've happened.
So I can actually speak on Buford. We're the program manager. So what most people don't realize is Buford was a four-year program. That's short. That's extremely short. Most projects can't be done in four years. They also chose a pay-as-you-go program instead of bonding. So while it passed in 2018, they started collecting tax May 1 of 2019. Most people, even though we've laid it out there and it's published on the website, they did not start any physical design until about 2020. And that was with sidewalks and pathway projects. And most people think those are quick projects. It's weird. FHWA and most DOTs put the highest importance on interstates. Of pure interstate widening, excluding interchange, is the simplest project you can do. The hardest projects are actually sidewalks and pathways because you're trying to fit them in right of way that already has everything else there between the road, utilities, you know, people's driveways, this, that, and the other. They take as much time as it does other projects. And most people don't realize that, but those didn't start until 2020 and other projects didn't start until 2021. So, so the money's sitting there, waiting, waiting to the point that we can get them to go and within the next, this year and going into next year, going to be very busy on that program between buying right of way because most of the sidewalks and pathways actually need right of way acquisition and then some of the roadway projects also.
Hence, we passed a referendum, they did not, for that reason. They passed, did not pass a referendum for that.
Right.
Because they weren't telling me.
Well, we were. It's just naysayers, naysayers can say whatever they want.
Yeah, sure.
Unfortunately, and that's a fact on that because the, a couple of other programs I've been on was Ridgeland County's first transportation penny, which played out in the headlines all over the state. Nothing wrong with the program, it's just naysayers can say what they want. I was also Dorchester County's 2004 sales tax program and then, like I said, DOT's 277 and then involved with Florence County's capital sales tax chief program. So.
Are there any other questions?
Are you on an annual contract with this period of the county or is it a per-project contract?
It's been a pure, single project contract. So the first one with the impact fees, it was done under the small procurement, so $25,000 or less on an as-needed basis hourly rate. The Knolls Island single project also, it was a not-to-exceed budget through the CTC.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next on the list is Ken Holt, Kevin Mars. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Hope you're all doing well. I'm Ken Holt and this is my partner in crime over here, Kevin Mars. He is your project manager. So what we've done is split the presentation in half. Actually, we spread it, split it in parts. So I'm going to take just a couple of slides to introduce you or give you an update on where our firm is, Holt Consulting Company. And then Kevin will drill down into projects, what's been going on with the airport and give you some hints of where things are going. We are headquartered in Columbia and my business partner, Paul Holt and myself, we learned a long time ago that you offer services that you understand, that you've had some experience in. And both of us, that's all we've done in our, our entire careers, which is transportation infrastructure and more specifically airports, roads, and bridges. So we started this company back in the summer of 2013 and we grew this firm very carefully, very methodically, very slow. And that's the best way, we've learned in the industry, that's the best way to do it. And then you have controlled growth. So we've been very blessed. We started off with two employees, the two of us. We're up to 47 now. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Jasper County because when we started this company in June of 2013, it was just a matter of months and Jasper County gave us a start. They gave us a chance. And so when you see the growth that we've enjoyed, a lot of that credit goes to this county for giving us a chance and we appreciate that very much. Give you a breakdown in terms of our two, we say aviation and surface, surfaces, roadways, and bridges. But on the aviation front, we have a list there of all of our capabilities and the same thing for surface, both roads and bridges. So I'm not going to sit here and read them all to you. Hopefully, maybe you've had a chance to see this before, but if not, if you have any questions, please answer me, stop me and we'll, we'll attempt to answer your questions. I woke up with sore throats morning, so I'm not going to touch that thing. Thank you, Kevin.
Here we go.
Okay, in terms of our experience in South Carolina alone, the map to the left shows all of our career experience. That's all the people that are working for Holt Consulting Company. That's our career experience. You can see there we just about covered all the public use airports as well as several of the military installations in South Carolina. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are actually clients that we serve on an on-call basis, just like we do Jasper County. And that represents 19 airports, which is about 33% of the state's public use publicly on airports. In terms of our surface experience, roads and bridges, that's the map to the right. All of the dark blue counties, which that, that's 41 of our 46 counties, that's our career experience. And then the projects that we have done for counties as Holt Consulting are highlighted in yellow, which are 22 counties, so that's about 50% of the state. The good thing about us is we've been given, particularly on the aviation front, we've been given the opportunity to work for the busiest airport in the world, that would be Atlanta, Hartsfield, and also serve an airport, let's say like St. George down in Dorchester County that has about three airports, I mean, excuse me, about three aircraft there. So for whether it's big or small, we tailor our services to accommodate our client. So with that. Kevin, would you mind sharing?
Sure. So I want to focus more on the county, the airport. So I figured we'd look at the airport before we got involved, before the actual runway program started. This was, I said 2012, really there was nothing, a whole lot happened on the field until 2019 when the first part of this airfield opened and was used. But I use 2012 because that's right before all the work behind the scenes started. And the facility had been expanded to about all it could do with a little bitty runway. As you see, it's less than 2,700 feet, a non-standard width. You had the school on the north end with approach issues. There's a big pecan tree right off the end where the planes had to dip down to land. On the south end, you had terrain issues, you had trees, crosswinds that would cause accidents like you see in the illustration there. So it had reached about all it could do and it's done a lot with the local involvement to make these things happen. But there was interest. As you see there in the illustration, I've got three bullet points, 1985, 1992, and 2001. We had environmental assessments for a new runway at the airport. And then in 2001, even going outside of that, maybe we'll find a facility somewhere elsewhere in the county that was looked at as well. But we came back to, we need to put a runway here at this existing facility. So in those years, there were only five funded projects from the federal and state level that totaled about $400,000. So just not a lot of traction to get this thing going. But once we got that going, it, it, it made things start moving. And of course, we knew that the local people, Claude Dean and other county members wanted that to happen. But I always like to think about what the Field of Green says, if you build it, they will come. We always say, well, what does that mean? No one can actually put the actual percentage and how many businesses and things of that nature will come. And the federal government even says, we're not going to fund specing the projects, you know? We're doing stuff based on empirical data. But one thing's for sure, I added the last part, if you don't build it, they will go somewhere else. And this is true because other counties, other states are constantly doing things to improve how they look. The state of Georgia, if you noticed, they had a bunch of airports that they upgraded all their runways to 5,000 feet to make them more competitive. And that puts them at an advantage versus other airports that don't have that. So that's something to keep in mind. You don't know exactly what will happen, but if you don't do anything, nothing will happen. So we're glad that we're able to help the county with this. So the basically three phases, planning of it, that what you see there is the approved airport layout plan. We went through that process. That was approved in July 2014. As you see there, in January of 2014 is when Ken and Paul were officially notified by contract with the county to start work. And we started with this design and preliminary planning of that facility in 2014. And the good thing about this is we looked at the whole facility as if it were fully developed. And so the three detention ponds on the other side of the airport, we put all the ugly stuff away from the public, those are situated and designed for almost the ultimate developments. It's basically designed for many, many hangers, many, many abrams. So in the future, we basically just hook onto those and shoot the water over to the other side of the airport. So it's set up to work for many, many years to come. The next part of that was land and we're actually doing these things together. The planning was taking place, but we're also in the process of purchasing land. You see the parcels, those two big ones in the middle, the orange ones, were the Vadel properties. Those came out pretty quickly in 2015. We needed those to get the runway, which you see in purple, which is the current facility. We also had five more parcels, four on the south end you see in dark blue and then one more small one right there where the entrance road to the airport comes in. That's right where that parcel is and we really needed that one to get an entrance across from the school to make the main entrance to the airport. And finally, we had to get the protection for the land and the air above it on those 49 parcels you see in light blue. So all that took place. COVID slowed some of that down because as we know, the courts stopped working basically. So we had, we had some pause there and so that worked and it finished until 2022 with all the connotations. But it did not stop the design and construction of the project. So just a few photos of what we've accomplished here. This first one is focusing on the runway complex itself, which is the runway, taxiway is all the grading for that. You can see in the pictures, the groundbreaking ceremony was in early 2017. I think it was in January, basically this time of the year in 2017. The other picture shows Ari Goodson from Darlington, contractor, did an excellent job of moving all the dirt, cutting all the trees that need to be set up for that. And then Quality Enterprises with their office out of Hilton Head came up and did all the paving. They in fact bought some new, brand new equipment. They brought up here, trained all the people and we got the benefits of their brand new equipment and gave us a really, really smooth project. Our inspector, who's done this for 40 years, said it's the smoothest runway that he has driven on, which is saying quite a bit. So that's a great testament there. All that was wrapped up in 2021 with the connection to the existing legacy airfield as we call it. But that was not it. That's, that's the engine to the car, the runway. But we also needed all the accessories that make that runway work. So in 2021, we got the terminal area completed and that's set up so that any hangers that go north and south within the initial development, we've got water sewer connectivity there as well. 2022, the interim terminal that you see now, Danny, we helped him get that permitted through the FAA, did a lot of work there to get that working and that's in place. 2023, the apron was doubled after those couple of golf tournaments came and the larger aircraft required that. So we need more room to park these large aircraft because that initial apron was designed for small aircraft and all of a sudden these bigger planes are coming, they take up all room. So you now have a double-sized apron. And then the last two you see there, the fuel farm, those are nice package systems that just came in. They basically haul them in, drop them down, hook them up, and you're ready to go. It took a while to get them, but once they got them on site, they were hooked up pretty good. And lastly, onsite weather information as opposed to relying on Buford or other airports increases safety as well. The impact to this project that we've been involved in with the county, obviously is safer, longer runway, meets all the current FAA standards. It has a consistent line of grade there, so it's easy visibility to get tire runway, taxiway, no blind spots. It's increased operations because people see it here on the I-95 corridor. Don't tell you that, don't know all this, but it's a nice spot as people come up and down the East Coast to stop in, get some fuel, and move on. So immediately, there was a turboprop and small jet usage, more than what we designed. This airport is actually designed for a King Air 200, but immediately we're getting aircraft that exceeded that and almost immediately can we get a longer runway, pretty much right after we had this finished. So a lot of interest there and of course, the bigger aircraft require more fuel, so that brings in more funding. Two golf tournaments, I think there's another one in June coming, the Arnold Palmer Cup is coming in June, according to what I read. So maybe there'll be some more usage for the airport as well there because again, it's here and can be used. Now, since we do this at all kinds of airports, if I were to draw up like a dream general aviation airport, here's some of the things that I would list, check off to see if I've got. And you can see, you've pretty much got everything in checks. The only reason the terminal says orange is because that's not your permanent terminal. We have the facilities, but we know that eventually we're going to have a more permanent building there. So I gave it a different kind of check. But the last two are the only things that would take you away from being basically kind of a level playing field with all the other airports. That's the long enough runway and that's for insurance purposes for jets and charter flights, things of that nature. Of course, they'll want every extra foot you can give them, but 5,000 is like the magic number and that's why Georgia did what they did. Lastly, your IFR approaches. So on days like today, when it's raining, you can't operate. With those IFR approaches, you can. So it opens up the flexibility to the facility. So a very good report card, just a few things and of course, work on those things. We just turned in the paperwork again to the FAA on the IFR last Monday or Tuesday. So that is back in the works again to get those IFR approaches going. So that's looking good. I'm not going to talk about all these different things, but here's basically what we feel like our job here to help you is, and that is to be an extension of your staff to help you with these different airport things. For example, paperwork, our goal doesn't always happen, but we try to make it happen as much as possible. Any of these complicated forms and applications and numbers, we prepare it all, package it up, and then if it needs to be sent to Kim or to Andy or to Danny, we'll send that to them. And our goal is that it would just take them a few minutes, maybe an hour, to review it, make sure it's good, and then put their signatures on that. We give them places on the documents where they need to sign and then they're done because we've done all the checking, we had someone in our office checking so that they can get back to whatever it is that we're doing before that. Communication, it's good to make sure we maintain credibility with the FAA, the State Aeronautics, which is SCAC. So we weren't asking for funds, they don't look at you and go, y'all don't know what you're doing. They, they know that we are because we speak their language and we're working with them. All the documents there, you see on the far right, 778, that's the total number of advisory circulars the FAA has for pilots, aircraft, and airports. And so our job is to have you not have to read all those documents because it'll put you to sleep, but to find out which ones apply, apply them and make sure you're covered in the future and you don't get caught. Well, why did you do it this way? Now you're in violation of this particular document you didn't know about. So that's what we do for you there. Let's talk about the two things in highlights there, funding and schedule, just for a second. Funding is such a big thing. How do we get money? And we take a lot of pride in this, the fact that when we are selected by somebody, we take a lot of interest in increasing what you get, your share of what that money is. In this case, as you see there, 25 different grants, 12 from the FAA, 12 from the State Aeronautics Commission, and one from Department of Commerce that we've worked with the county to help acquire. And that total is $23.5 billion over these dozen years or so, leaving about 15% for the county. Now, that's a little high. Now, that's a little higher than normal, and that's just because that one DOC grant was a 50-50 split. So it skewed a little bit. Normally, it's going to be like 5% to 10% is your typical share if you're getting this federal government. But anyway, that grant was helpful in getting that apron expanded. But you can see the total at the bottom of everything spent so far. I'll tell you this, new runways are rare. New airports are the rarest, though. New runways are pretty rare. I've been in this over 40 years, and I've done, I think, seven, worked on seven different new runways. That's not many in that many years. So Ridgeland is certainly a point of pride, not just for us and the county, but the state aeronautics talks about this, they beam with pride about it, and also the FAA, because they're funding partners in getting this accomplished. So when they come and see it, you can see it's almost like a fatherly pride they have in looking at this facility. Lastly, this one, just showing you, that's enough to give you the schedule the FAA and the state have that starts October 1st. We know your schedule's a little different, it's July 1st to June 30th. But a lot of different things we have to keep up with, and we keep up with it so Andy and Danny and Kim don't. And again, we'll know when those things are due. We just finished up the planning section from November through December. If you look at January, the FAA is now looking at all those documents. They've actually gotten back with us and, hey, we need to talk about this particular thing so they can then program for the next couple of years. And then we go into bidding, if that's a construction project, and the schedule goes through all those things. So our job, you see, is to take the burden off of you. Finally, planning ahead. FAA wants us to update five-year plan, so we just turned in the 26 through 30 funding plan. As you can see there, through the year 2030, we have about $2 million that the FAA has allocated to Jasper County for the airport. And if we don't use it and commit it properly, it gets taken away. Each grant amount has like a four-year cycle. If you don't use it within four years, it goes somewhere else. So we have to make sure we commit it, we know what's getting ready to expire, commit those the right way, and use them in the right project and in the right order. Because sometimes if you use it the wrong order, you get penalized. And so we try to help with that process as well. As we know, there are several competing projects right now that the terminal, hangers, longer runway, and all these things take more money. They're good places to be, but they do present challenges that we can help you with. So with us on the team, in summary, it helps these guys and ladies focus on other county business. Because as we were listening, there's tons of things that y'all need to focus on, and not just this airport, because that's one piece of this transportation network you've got. But let them focus on those things, let Danny and the staff out there work on the airport, attracting business, getting good reviews so they come back through again and buy more fuel, maintain the airport, and of course, attract new tenants, new businesses, because that's really what we want you to focus on. So we're an extension of the staff, we'll try to help you best we can, and of course, final decision is yours. We're just here to help. So I think that finishes up our presentation. Any questions?
Any questions?
We appreciate the time.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you had the slide two back, 2 million FAA. You had a list of projects, runway extension, terminal.
Oh, yeah, thank you. There we go, my bad. This one here.
Yeah. Is this current, this 2 million available FAA funds, use it or lose it?
Yes.
That's something that's available now?
As you can see, I've got it available now is the 1.116, basically through 2025. And then I just projected out.
This is 2 million, let's just say any funds available from the FAA.
Yeah.
That would be for one of these three or four things listed?
Projects, yeah.
And of course, that's a matching thing. None of these projects could be completed for what they're putting. So these are matching funds, which are not things that unless we're able to at least match it or more.
Yes. Yeah, some of these projects, this is all what they call entitlements or special set of sides, discretion areas where they see the need and they say, okay, we're going to give you an extra $5 million. For example, in 2016, initially it was going to be $5 million, and then they said, what if we double that? Could we spend it? We said, of course we can, we told them how. And eventually, it ended up being almost $15 million with that one grant, which is, I don't think I've heard of one for general aviation airport like that. But that's kind of how that works.
Well, it's kind of interesting that you had on one of the slides from 1985 to 2013?
Four hundred thousand dollars.
And from 2013 to present?
Twenty-seven.
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 Yeah.
Of course, it's skewed because you're building basically a new airport attached to an existing airport. And so it's huge.
Sure. It is. But it is our dilemma.
Yes. Yeah, I think it's, we're at the growing pain stage now. We've gotten through all this stuff, and now it's like, oh, we need other things. They're like, well, you're on your own now. You're grown up.
You alluded to that, and you sound like you had a good grasp on what's going on.
We try. We try.
Thank you.
That's just federal funds right there, right?
Yeah, that's just the federal funds. There's also, like for terminal, there's half a million from the state that's available.
I think we're in, what did it show, 4.1 or something?
Yeah. Right. And two and a half of that was that matching Department of Commerce, rural rate, so.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'm trying to think of one right now.
I have no questions.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're here.
Appreciate your help.
We're here. Thank you very much.
On the home stretch, Parker Poe Law Firm, Ray Jones and Ryan Ramano.
Good afternoon. How's everybody?
Not bad.
I'm Ray Jones. Ryan is here, and we both have got several things to share with you this afternoon. Mr. Kip asked me to keep it to two hours, so I'm going to do what I can to do that, just to make sure everybody settles in.
We're all going to go out to lunch on you.
I was going to say.
Okay.
Perfect. Fine. First, if we can, just we want to thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all. We've worked with Andy and David and Kim and others on lots of different things that we'll talk about this afternoon. We're just going to have a conversation today, not that there's any issue or problem with the PowerPoint. I'm sure Azad gave you a nice one. But we're just going to talk to you just generally about what we do, how we do it. And then Ryan is going to get into some specifics about what the process is on economic development related projects, because I imagine in particular for the new council folks, you will start to see a lot of things hit your agenda. We want to try to give you some context so you appreciate what that is, where it is at the stage, et cetera. So Ryan and I both work at Parker Poe. Parker Poe is a law firm based in the Carolinas. We have offices in DC and Georgia as well. We have always worked with local governments. I've been with Parker Poe over 25 years. Ryan has been with Parker Poe less than 25 years, as you can see, but he's part of our team, and we work with lots of local governments across the state. We have always had a subspecialty, if you will, of working with counties. We work with some cities as well, but we find ourselves working with lots of different counties, big and small, on lots of different kinds of issues. Those issues fall mainly into four buckets. We work on development related issues, we work on tax related issues, we work on finance related issues. Ryan and I are also bond lawyers. And then we work on what I call just ancillary issues. And then in terms of what we do with you all, we specifically work on your economic development related projects. We work on some interesting specialty litigation, which I'll explain more about here in just a minute. And then we also try to bring other resources to the table. So you met Azad earlier. I always acknowledge when the brains are in the room, and when Azad is in the room, the brains are in the room. So Azad works for Parker Poe Consulting. That's a subsidiary of our firm that we formed over 10 years ago. And the idea was that we were finding that lots of our governmental clients needed additional services that lawyers don't provide. If you don't know this, I'll let you in on a little secret, most lawyers are not very good with numbers, present company excluded. We're all decent with numbers, but a lot of lawyers aren't. And so Azad and his colleagues provide lots of services to our governmental clients, and specifically the kinds of things that Azad does for you all, to try to make sure that all of the incentives that you're entered into are properly accounted for, properly billed, and properly collected. And so they provide a tremendous service. They also provide legislative and lobbying services and other things to our governmental clients. In our case, the things we do for you, if someone comes to you and asks for an economic development incentive, we help negotiate contracts. We try to make sure, along with David and Andy, that what you're offering one company is not terrifically different from what you offered a similar company last year on a similar kind of deal. So we try to make sure you have continuity. We try to make sure in your documents that you have accountability. In other words, if somebody is making promises to you, we want to make sure that if they fail to fulfill them, that there will be penalties and/or additional conversations to be had. We recognize that you all have responsibilities to your constituents. If you give somebody an economic development incentive, there's an expectation that what you incentivize is actually going to happen. So we work with you all on that, and as I said, Ryan will provide some additional information about that in just a minute. The other thing that we have spent, gosh, four or five years working together on is exit three and all things relating to exit three. That might be a completely separate workshop, Mr. Polk, but just to give you some high points of exit three, there are a number of parties involved in that transaction. It's a pretty novel idea that a city and a county would go together and go to the state infrastructure bank and seek grant and loan funds to have some additional development occur within the county. And in a nutshell, that's what's happening. So the county and the city of Hardyville have been working with the state infrastructure bank for a long time, a long process, to secure loans and grants designed to do various roadway improvements, including to contribute to the development of a new exit three off of I-95. The hope of that is it will open up a number of additional sites to enable you all to then garner additional economic development. And so that has been a long process. It's been a highly political process, and we have been walking with you all through that process now for four-ish years. So exit three is one of those things that sort of falls in the middle of economic development and finance. That's not unusual for us to sort of be sitting in that kind of position. The other things we've spent a fair amount of time working with you all on are specialty litigation that spins off of taxes, development, and finance. So right now, you all have had some litigation here locally regarding who's in charge of which accounts and how those things are to be managed, and we've helped you all with that. There's also been local litigation about how multi-county park revenues are to be distributed and managed, and we've been helping you all with that. Mainly, I would say, we work to keep you all out of litigation and to try to make sure that the contracts that we work with you all enter into are give you sufficient protections. Couple other things that we spend a lot of time on around the state, we've touched on here, but maybe haven't gotten as deep. So within the development, taxes, and finance world, we spend a lot of time working with folks on workforce and affordable housing. We spend a lot of time working with folks on how we can bring state resources into economic development. And so there's all manner of state-related grants, state-related incentive programs. We sort of help the county coordinate its efforts to have the state get involved in local economic development. From time to time, we have to put our thinking caps on and get creative. When you all have an infrastructure need, and we try to identify sources of revenues, or at least share with you experiences that we've had in other parts of the state, where we've seen solutions patched that might work here. You all, as you well know, are in an extremely fast-growing area of the state. It makes you a really exciting client to work with, a very interesting client to work with, because it's a lot of different stuff almost every day, as I look over here at my colleagues. We view ourselves as a partner to you, and most of our relationships that we have with our counties are long-term relationships that transcend politics and transcends, you know, what's happening in the White House, but has everything to do with what's happening right here on the ground. Again, we view ourselves as a partner in what you're trying to accomplish. And so we take our lead from you, we take our lead from your very able administrative colleagues here tomorrow, right? So unless you have questions about the overview, I really would like Ryan to come talk to you about the economic development incentive process. I think that might be meaningful to you in particular. I know of some things that will either be on your agenda or hitting your agendas shortly. So let me invite him to do that, and we'll both be here for questions, and then we'll go from there. That suit?
Thank you.
Okay. Ryan?
Any questions first?
No, not this time.
Thank you.
Like I already said, thank you guys for having us. So I thought with the economic development incentives, there's just a lot of terms and acronyms that will start showing up on agendas. And when we walk through the process, I think it'd be helpful to kind of just go through a typical maybe deal process and where these things all fit into the puzzle. So I know earlier you heard from the Southern Carolina Alliance, and they do a lot of great work as far as identifying companies that are interested in locating in Jasper County and starting somewhat of the preliminary like deal negotiations with those companies about investment amounts, job creation amounts, possibly how much property tax savings they're looking to ultimately get. So once one of those projects that the Southern Carolina Alliance brings forward is really ready to move forward on requesting incentives, the company will have their own counsel, and they'll come and request property tax savings. And they do that through a few different mechanisms that all kind of overlap and are interrelated. So the first thing for property to receive the incentives is for it to be placed into something called a multi-county park. So they will ask for whatever piece of land that they're going to put the spec building on or the manufacturing plant to be put into a multi-county park. Now, that's not any specific physical spot, but it's just a legal designation that this land is in a park. That requires action by the county where the land is in, in one of our partner counties who we typically use Hampton County, have a great relationship with them. It requires consent of both parties to designate this land as being in a multi-county park. That means the land's no longer taxed normally, it's paying a fee payment instead of tax. So you hear about fees and lieu of tax, that's where we're getting that terminology. The other thing that they'll ask for is, in most cases, a FLO agreement, which is a fee and lieu of tax agreement. So on top of being in a multi-county park, we can sign an agreement where we say that they are a special type of fee and lieu of tax, and it allows them to freeze the millage for the parcel that's in the multi-county park and subject to the fee agreement. And it also drops the assessment rate on their property. So they'll come forward and ask for the property put in a multi-county park, most of the time for it to be subject to a FLO agreement. And also typically, they will include something called a special source revenue credit, which is on top of the other savings, this is where the big tax savings comes. And for instance, it could be a 20% special source revenue credit. So if they meet all the investment goals, all the job creation goals, not only is the property given special treatment when it comes to the assessment rate and the millage, but it's also credited a reduction in taxes, a reduction in that fee payment at the end. So the process, again, really comes from the Southern Carolina Alliance finding a project, the developer engaging council that of course wants to get the best incentive package for them. They'll make an ask and approach us. We work, David and Andy, to review what we've committed to in the past for similar investment amounts, similar job amounts, and determine what we're kind of thinking is a reasonable credit to give. Of course, we take our lead from you for what we're ultimately willing to offer and work with them on just managing the documents that put this in place, managing the agendas for Jasper County, and looking out for our interest in it. So having built-in protections, like Ray mentioned, if they don't make the investment amounts, but we've already given them tax savings ways to pull that back, or indemnity for the county in case they, you know, do something under your agreement that would cause us to have litigation. So that's really the overview of the process and where we fit in. And happy to answer any questions, because there's a lot of unique terms.
Any questions?
Not necessarily any question before the statement when it comes to economic development, FLOs and different things. Didn't realize how much complexity it was with some of the different vendors we've talked to today, how everything kind of intertwines to kind of come out with that final product. So definitely not open to learn a lot of this today.
By the way, I think I gave you the, they did a presentation two years ago, 2022, 23. We did it down at Hardyville?
At the Rink Center, isn't it?
Right. Right. And I think I gave it to you, and you finished with it, passed it on. That was a four-hour, four hours of what we went through?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I was going to suggest that Ryan review that for you in the next four hours.
We've got the shortcut here.
We have a question before your arrival, I think, about the economic development agreement with the city of Hardyville, and you guys were instrumental in helping us get through that logjam. Can you explain what we did and how you made you do that as creative and the need to renew the project?
So I had mentioned for all of these incentives to be possible, the property has to be put in that multi-county park, which requires action from, at a minimum, Jasper County and the partner county. If the property is in the city limits, the city also has to take action. So the county, Jasper, if it's in Jasper, will have to pass an ordinance. The other county, Hampton, and then the city would ordinarily have to pass just a resolution. To avoid having to go to the city every time we had one of these deals, we sat down in a, that was, that was a two-day meeting with the city, kind of hammered out an agreement that basically they pre-consented to all of the deals we brought forward going into multi-county parks for the next five years. So that was one thing that that agreement did. The other thing that agreement did is when we get the fee payments, we're going to split them all according to millage, so just how we would ordinarily split taxes among all of the taxing authorities. So if it's in the city, they'll get their percentage. If it's into the county, of course, the county's always getting their percentage as well. The further complexity with that is if the city charges just kind of general development fees, like very hefty development fees that aren't tied to that specific project, we adjust the split to increase the county's split of the payment proportionately so the city can't kind of overburden development and double it in that way. That agreement was done in 2021, so the fall of 2021, so it'll be up in the fall of 2026. Yeah, I think it's working really well. It's enabled us to move faster when projects show up. It's kind of curtailed some of the concerns around development fees that were charged in the city, and so that's something that we will be going back to them and, you know, hoping we can get renewed.
These are, do you handle, excuse me, does anybody else have a question?
Go ahead.
Do you vote?
Go ahead.
Okay. Do you, now, you do industrial and residential or just industrial developments?
We do, in just any type of development services? We do both.
Both? Okay. And you do the negotiation of where, how much that you, you give us guidance on how much we'll take, right? Do you ever have any guidance about affordable housing?
Yep.
I mean, that's, today we've had, I don't know, how many, six, 12, 12 people? And four of them were affordable housing, had something to do with affordable house.
Sure.
Very important. If you don't have the housing to put people in, you don't have industrial, industry or anything, really.
I agree.
So is there a way we could be more stronger in that?
There is. So a couple of thoughts about that. I'm going to, in a minute, give you a resource that you might find stronger, but also let me just talk to you about what we've done in some other places. So the affordable housing equation or the lack thereof is a challenge all across the state. It's a challenge in Jasper, it's a challenge in Greenville, it's a challenge in Charleston, it's a challenge in the Midlands, it's a challenge in Florence. So there's really three-ish ways local government can get involved. One is property taxes. And you may say, we need property taxes. And I'm going to say, I know. But what affordable housing developers will say to you is, look, we're coming to the table. We're going to agree that only people with certain incomes are going to live here, which means that we're going to restrict the level of income, which also means we're going to restrict the rents that can be charged in affordable housing. By definition, affordable housing is 80% of the area median income or below, and the rents go along with that. And so affordable housing developers will say, because we're willing to build an affordable product and legally be bound to who lives here, we need help. And we might need help with land, we might need help with property taxes, we might need help, some may come and ask for cash grants. It's a huge issue. I can tell you, as I live across the state, I can't tell you anybody has really cracked the code perfectly. For instance, Greenville County adopted to great fanfare, as I recall, in October of '22, a property tax reduction plan for affordable housing that fell completely flat, caused a fracture in the county council, and was probably, and was basically repealed 10 months later. Richland County has a 50% for 10-year reduction. If you're affordable housing, if you commit to make it affordable, they will offer you 50% break for 10 years. I've seen other communities go higher than that. I've seen other communities completely reject affordable housing. So we try to deliver, I guess, value beyond just the legal work that we do for our clients. So if you're really interested, there's a podcast called the Stronger Bonds Podcast.
What is it?
And that podcast includes a recent episode about what local government can do to support affordable housing. If you need to know how to get it, I know you have at least one listener at this table. Her name is Kim, and she can, she can get that to you. And literally, we talk about exactly what you're talking about. It is a huge challenge throughout the state, not just in our state, mind you. And a lot of folks think, well, the federal government will solve this problem, the state government will solve this problem. And the answer is, not really. You know, they've got other problems. So we'd love to talk to you more about affordable, the other acronym, or not acronym, the other trade name you'll hear here for housing is workforce housing. If you remember nothing else about us, just remember that we're Parker Poe and that workforce housing is different than affordable housing. Workforce housing is designed to cover people who have higher incomes than that 80% limit that I talked about, because depending upon where you are in the state, policeman and fireman may earn more than 80% of area median income, but there's not enough housing stock for them to buy a house. So for them to be able to live in an affordable apartment, it needs to be workforce housing. Workforce housing and the development of workforce housing is the wild frontier in our state. There's a great opportunity to do it, but most public servants, most folks that have good frontline manufacturing or other industrial jobs are going to fall above 80% AMI. They still need housing. So great conversation to have. We're open to continuing it anytime. Let me just end with this. One of the things we pride ourselves on is trying to be able to give you all a number of solutions under one roof. So you met Azad today, that's a great example. These folks have met some of my litigation guys that are also great examples. Working with local government is different than working with private industry. I think it's a subspecialty. I think you need to appreciate the politics of local government. We appreciate what you all deal with as elected officials. We appreciate the pressures you're under. And so when we try to deliver to you solutions, we try to do that with an informed opinion, not just about what the law is, but about what the best solution would be. And we have that informed opinion because we have a number of people that are at our table that work with local government in various capacities to try to help solve problems. And the solution to the problem isn't always legal. Sometimes it's practical. So we have guys that are retired county administrators and Parker Poe consulting. We have Azads of the world. We have some folks who say, you know what, we need the law changed. So we're like, well, we can help there too. I think it's important that we're able to provide you, I think, with that sort of view of things. It's not just narrow in terms of what lawyers do, but gives you a broader scope. Sometimes we laugh about the politics of what we do, right, Andy?
Absolutely.
Asked Andy one day to tell you about the meeting of the STIV that we were kidnapped and had to sit in for eight hours. But, you know, that's part of the deal, and we're so glad to be along with you all for the ride. So thanks so much for your time and your attention. Answering any more questions, Mr. Chair, or we'll be on our way.
Yeah, I've asked this question before today. How do you guys charge for your firm? You guys fee hourly, is it a mix of things?
It's a mix. So great example of the mix. So Azad charges, I think he charges a fixed fee for all the work that he does on Gatsby for you all. If we're working for litigation for you all, we charge a discounted government rate. If we're working on economic development where a company is coming to you asking for incentives, they pay our fees. So we charge it back to them as an expense. Any other examples you can think of, David?
We're trying to put the administrative annual fee for Azad back into the multi-county parks.
That's right. That's right. We, in many respects, if we foresee that something, that somebody is asking you for is going to require an annual amount of professional services, so there's some pretty complicated incentive agreements out there that we do our very best to make it more simple or to simplify. But sometimes Azad's job is to make sure that when your bill goes out, it's right, and make sure that what gets collected is correct. And so we're trying to make sure that we're able to charge those kinds of fees back to the companies who've asked for the complex incentive arrangements. So that's something we've been talking about a lot. Does that help?
Yeah. You know, again, do you, are you aware of the Affordable Housing Trust that we have?
I'm not, but I'm aware of others that have them.
Well, we have an Affordable Housing Trust. And when you're negotiating and they, they bring that up or you bring that up, there should be a connection there to say, okay, we have a trust that we can go to and see what they can give you any money.
That's a great point.
I mean, that seems to be the case for Jasper County sometimes. Everybody has their little, there's no connection. So.
Yeah.
Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Poe, could you give them a number of the Affordable Housing Trust, just so they have a case?
Sure. I'll send along to them in case they have a client that's interested.
Just a client that maybe comes up and says, we can do it, you know, we need some money to do something, they can say, yeah.
That's a great idea.
I mean, just nothing got you, nothing gave you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it, Tom.
Can I ask you one quick question?
It's all right.
So if a FLO agreement comes forward?
Yes.
Is the SCA always involved? Do they bring that forward with, are they bringing?
In our, in our experience, they're almost always involved. Now, we have a few, like for instance, you've got a deal we did. We did the Clarius deal three years ago.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, four years ago. So, so from time to time, you will have projects come directly to the county. Now, sometimes it's because they have other connections. So for instance, if you have a company like Clarius that bought up a big piece of land and got incentives on that piece of land, if they're selling or leasing some of that land to another investor, then sometimes that investor will come direct. But don't you think almost always it's SCA?
It's the vast majority. I can only think of one solar project in the Clarius deal where it wasn't since 2001.
If I'm not part of that, it's because many of these developers coming from off to come in here are funded to the Department of Commerce because the Department of Commerce wants them to go to the Southern Carolina Alliance because that's their partner involved, and that comes through us. So it gets structured from the state level down to fund it that way on most, on most deals, except for the ones that are in here and got the initial stuff. We've had a couple, three of those.
I'm sorry, Kim.
Mr. Kim, it's a great point that they say economic development is a team sport, right? So we've got a machine now working from all sides in economic development, but that's, that's all you two. If you happen to have business acquaintance or a friend or a family member that wants to, has a business idea, we encourage you to turn them over to the Southern Carolina Alliance and start that rolling so we can shower them with resources and see if they can make something work. But leads come from anybody, absolutely anybody. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Yes.
And last but not the least, I'm sorry. Chris Johnson. Would you lose something? Usually the last person on the list is really.
Yeah, that's just where they put me.
Chris.
I've got a powerpoint.
Do you need five minutes, Chris?
Yeah, I need to get the job.
Sure, we might need about five minutes to set up if anyone. Okay, five minutes. So.[1422.23] Sir?
Ready? Ready here.
Everybody ready? Okay. Welcome back.
All right. Thank you. So I'm Chris Johnson with Bettis Law Group and I was asked to tell y'all a little bit about what we do and what we do for y'all. So we are a labor and employment law firm and that is all we do. We're not competent to do anything else. I know that some folks aren't real sure what, what, what labor and employment law is. So I thought I'd give a little rundown of some of the things that we, that we help folks with, particularly in the public sector. We do a lot of public sector work. So counties, cities, state agencies, universities, that kind of thing. So obviously, public employees have constitutional protections that, that private, you know, private sector employees don't have, such as freedom of speech, whoops, freedom of religion. There could be Fourth Amendment issues, search and seizure, get into drug testing. Fifth Amendment, you know, the right to, to remain silent that everybody's familiar with from, from TV. When there are internal investigations, particularly when they happen in the law enforcement department. Those can be issues and just general due process as far as the public employee's rights and their reputation or in retaining the job that they have. And then Fourteenth Amendment deals with equal protection, which is just the notion that governments are supposed to treat similarly situated people similarly. So we deal with all those sorts of things. There are prohibitions, obviously statutory prohibitions on discrimination based on any of these protected categories. And where we, you know, obviously run into that, when we get into whether it's harassment claims or, you know, somebody's made a complaint to Human Resources that they're being harassed by their, by their boss or by even a member of the public. We can help give advice about those dealing with that, how to, how to work through it. Similarly, when litigation comes up, obviously, we can, we can help defend the county in those cases or when there's charges of discrimination that get filed with the State Human Affairs Commission or the federal EEOC. We deal a lot with accommodations. That's the, the big area of work. We talk about disability in the Americans with Disabilities Act is providing accommodations and what is reasonable accommodation in the circumstances. Pregnancy accommodations are relatively new. There's been a pregnancy anti-discrimination law at the federal level and at the state level for, for a long time. But the state was actually ahead of the feds on requiring accommodations for pregnant employees. Didn't used to be the case that you had to do that. And then veterans, when they return to work following service under USARA, if they are, if they have sustained injuries that might impact their ability to do their job and there are certain accommodation requirements, so you have to deal with that. Leave rights, we deal with that. Family medical leaveback obviously applies to the county because you've got, you've got more than 50 employees and, and covers a broad range of, of things beyond what it originally was designed for. There's, there's some military leave provisions in there for, for caregivers and for family members who are trying to get, get their family ready for a military service member leaving. Again, disability that can come with, with some leave rights and that work leave may be a reasonable accommodation. Pregnancy, talk about that. USARA is the federal military leave law. It is fairly complex and, and comes with a bunch of statutory and regulatory requirements as far as when employees come back from military leave, whether it's just their two weeks of leave every year for guard drills or whether they've been away for three or four years, employees. And then the state also has a military leave law and it requires some level of paid leave for public sector employees. And it's, it's a clearer law than it used to be, but there are still issues that come up with that law in terms of when someone is entitled to some of the, the extra pay beyond the 15 days that's, that's kind of standard in the statute. We do a lot of wage and hour law, so the Fair Labor Standards Act is a federal law. It's been around since 1930s. Everybody's familiar that there's a federal minimum wage, seven and a quarter an hour. You get overtime after 40 hours for most jobs, but in the public sector, we have fire and we have police, sheriff's office, and there overtime works differently. And then the exemptions that come with that, so the exemptions for, for executive employees, managers, administrator, for administrative employees like your functional heads, finance, HR, and things like that. And for professionals, those, those exemptions have requirements that have to be met for them to apply. So we, we typically help with classifying employees when, when that comes up or defending classifications that have been assigned if an employee challenges it or if the Department of Labor wants to investigate. And of course, I, the, you know, big news, I guess, several months ago was that the Biden administration had put in place changes to the threshold salary that you have to pay some of those folks that are exempt from the minimum wage and overtime laws. And, and that was slated to go into effect in June, end of June, and then in January. But that was put on hold by a federal judge and so we're, we're kind of back to where we were in 2019. Everybody look to see what the Trump administration is going to do with that this time. The state has a Payment of Wages Act. It's mostly a notice statute, but it, it, it can trip some people up. In general, you have to provide employees written notice of when you're going to pay them, how you're going to pay them, where you're going to pay them. And then you have to follow whatever it is you say you're going to do. In addition to those things, we, we assist with policies and grievance procedures. So the types of policies that we would look at would be personnel policies, employee handbooks. We help draft them. We help review them and revise them along with the HR folks in the administration. Commercial drivers license holders have to be subject to a randomized substance abuse testing program by federal law. We help when questions about that arises. We can also develop policies to explain to those folks the, the programs that are applicable to them, which is a federal regulatory requirement. We help with compliance policies, so policies that comply with the equal employment opportunity laws. Getting with wage and hour and pay and then with the leave laws, FMLA policies are usually kind of long in particular. And then just about every county in the state, if not every county, has got a grievance procedure under the state law. It's not required, but pretty much all of them have it. There's one here. It's, it's obviously in writing and we can help write those policies. They have to generally follow the outline of the statute. We provide hearing outlines for the committees to use, almost like a script, because these committees are made up of employees. They're not, they're not judges or lawyers. So we help them understand how to hold the hearing and take the evidence and that kind of thing. We can advise the committee on procedures for the, the policies and the state law provide that the grievance committee is entitled to an attorney anytime that it needs one. And we can also advise the county on how to present its case. We do a lot of employee relations and counseling, which is kind of triage work, as I like to call it. We, we get a lot of calls from HR directors and, and, and managers saying, hey, help. You've got an employee sitting outside the door and you're saying, X, what do I do? So we obviously provide legal support specific to employment law, to Human Resources and to the county attorney. We review documents of, of all kinds typically, you know, disciplinary memos. May just be counseling and coaching. If there's going to be a termination, a lot of times we'll, we'll review the documents that, that support the termination and then the, you know, notice the termination is going to go out. We can talk through the, the pros and cons of various courses of action and help figure out a way that is, protects the county, protects the county's employees and is obviously humane and treats people like people. We, we provide counseling for supervisors in HR when there's having an employee that they just can't figure out how to manage. We help with helping them to manage that employee and where we think that ultimately we're going to have to part ways. We help them be sure that they have developed a record that serves the foundation for that separation. Thankfully, in the public sector, employee benefits are relatively straightforward. I think you all are with PIBA for your retirement and your health, which, which makes things relatively easy as long as you can get one of their folks on the phone. That, that's a challenge sometimes. But we do help with eligibility issues that come up from time to time, particularly with, with folks like municipal judges, magistrates. You don't, you don't really have that problem, but part-time employees can, can sometimes present an issue. We handle investigations. So whether it's counseling Human Resources on how to conduct an investigation when an employee says, I'm being sexually harassed by my boss, or helping to secure outside investigators to come in where we need somebody who's, who's got some independence to come in and help us. And in the right situation, we may conduct the investigation ourselves. We also assist with the Freedom of Embarcation Act in particular as it relates to requests from employees for, for documents or by third parties for documents that, that have to do with, with employees, such as their personnel file or things like that. So just some examples of services that, that we have provided for Jasper County. And I've, I've been, I've been practicing with, with Bettis Law Group and the predecessor firm, General Atsavitz in Bettis, since 2000, so almost 25 years. And the county has been a client for that entire time. But we handle discrimination charges, so if an employee or former employee believes that they've been discriminated against based on race, gender, you know, any of those protected categories, typically before they can sue under most of the civil rights laws, they've got to file a charge with the state or with the federal government and give them an opportunity to investigate it and to try to resolve it. So we represent the county when those charges are filed and we, we provide a defense to the charge. When there is litigation over termination from employment, we handle those. We've handled several of those for, for the county. We successfully handled a litigation over firefighter pay plan. We defended the plan and got a good ruling from the judge on that. We had litigation years back over a position that the council eliminated and the person who was sitting in that position challenged it and we got that upheld. We have counseled HR in various investigations concerning harassment allegations. We review changes to various pay plans and counsel on employer responses that seek personnel information. So just to kind of overview some of the things that, that we've done. I miss anything that jumps out at y'all?
No.
Covers a waterfront.
As bad, Nicole isn't here because Chris is the go-to person for Nicole. I can't be found. When they find me, half the time it's, let's call Chris, because this is a specialty. And there are a lot of traps and pitfalls you fall into. Every one of those is something that happens on a periodic basis.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. One thing that you can guarantee about people and ultimately is, is people is what we do, is that they're going to screw up. I guess job security. Anyway, our firm practices exclusively in labor and employment law. We represent employers only. We do not represent employees against their employer. We have a particular focus, as I said at the beginning, on public sector employment law. So, you know, state, county, municipal. Our predecessor firm was founded in 1968, making it one of the oldest employment law firms in the state. We do a lot of litigation of defense, our litigation defense, so defending employment actions. And we're approved counsel for the Insurance Reserve Fund, which is the state insurer that I believe the county uses. There's a county property and liability trust out there too that provides insurance that some counties work with. We work with them both. And when they get involved, they're the ones that pay the bill. And typically in, in a litigation involving employment actions, unless it has to do with retaliation or some kind of intentional conduct or, or contract claim, typically they will get involved and they will, they will pick up the defense. We will work with private carriers and I don't, I don't think that's an issue for y'all. Again, we, we handle administrative matters like charges of discrimination. The Department of Labor comes in and they want to investigate a complaint by an employee about how they're, how they're paid, you know, they're not getting paid overtime right or something like that. Help with those. The state, they also, the Federal Department of Labor also handles FMLA investigations. So I don't think y'all have had one of those. I don't think y'all have had a Department of Labor investigation at all. The State Division of Labor, which is part of LLR, Labor Licensing Regulation, enforces the, the state's wage payment law. And if, if an employee complains that, you know, their pay got to them late or something like that or they weren't paying everything they were supposed to be, that will typically go there and we handle those. Again, I don't, I don't think y'all have had one of those that we, that we've helped with. And then something that's, that's not new, but is relatively new as far as being taken seriously are the Law Enforcement Training Council misconduct prosecution. So the, the, the state is, is trying to sort of crack down on police officers, law enforcement officers who are not doing what they should be doing and they just sort of get passed off to another agency instead of having their certification revoked. And so it's, it's long been the law that, that you're supposed to submit a, a personnel change of, of status form. And really this, this involves the sheriff for me, if that's y'all. But it's long been the law that you have to do that. You have to tell the Law Enforcement Training Council why you separated this employee and whether it was for, for misconduct that would affect their certification or not. But they're getting serious about it. The, the law enforcement community is getting serious about it. And the way the General Assembly and their wisdom set this up, the agency, so if it were your sheriff and he fired somebody and it's because they were abusing a detainee or something like that, something that would, that would affect their certification, then they have to prosecute the, any challenge to it that the law enforcement officer makes. And they can, they can retain counsel and so we've actually handled a few of those and there's been like many trials. But that's sort of become an up and coming area where, where we're getting involved and helping. Then obviously we provide counseling and advice on Human, Human Resources, employee relations type matters. That's all I had. Y'all have any questions for me?
Anybody? Yeah. How do we rate as far as counties go? I mean, looks like in 18 months, we've paid you guys like $62,000.
Yeah.
Is that a...
As far as expenses?
Yeah, is that a...
Yeah, I'm trying to think. Y'all have had some, had a few charges. The, the charges of discrimination, the insurance company won't pay for it. The IRF won't pay for it. So we had a few of those come through and some of them were somewhat complex. So we had those. The wage case was not covered by IRF because they don't pay wages. So that is probably the bulk of it. We took that, that case went from beginning through depositions to, to, you know, ultimately to summary judgment. We, we got it, we got a win without having to try it. Without looking at the, the invoice breakdown, my guess is that's the bulk of it.
Yeah.
I don't think we have any current litigation that's not insured. I don't know if we've got any that's... Any at all, yeah. We've got a charge of discrimination outstanding, I know. And I think that's it. So it should come back down.
Right. Does anybody else?
None at this time.
Does law enforcement include fire?
No.
In the MT?
Not, not for that Law Enforcement Training Council certification. No, they're, they've, they've got a different certification system and it's, I don't think they've got a, like a misconduct statute.
It's just nice to see because when I was in, in the DHR, I'd call up and they'd say, we, we let it go. Have us it. They wouldn't tell you anything else.
That's right.
And they were afraid for a lawsuit to come back at them. Just nice to see, at least law enforcement. I'd like to see it more.
That's right.
I have nothing else. I thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me.
There are little persons that we never hear about, but when we do, we don't want to be here.
Well, it's, I was about to say, if you, if you don't...
The less we hear a lot about it.
That's right. That's exactly right.
I thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Fogan? Andy?
Yes, sir.
I think it's about time. Do you have anything to say to us?
I don't, other than I hope you come back tomorrow morning. You're not here.
I'd like to thank Andy, Trish, Londa, and everybody else that set this up. I hope it was informing and it was worthwhile to bring us together on it. At least we have some information. I thank you very much and I'm not even going to call it. The jury.